Reset on the audio didn't quite work, so your occasional popping sound in the audio didn't quite take what we're going to run. Paul, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Here.
Trustee Lawler?
Here.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Here.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katinaus?
Here.
Trustee Malani?
Here.
Mayor Dodge?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of the November 17th, 2025 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katinaus?
I move to approve indeed the minutes of the trustee meeting of November 17th, 2025.
Second?
It's a motion to second and you can have some questions about the minutes. Paul, please.
Trustee Katinaus?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Proclamations.
We have a couple of proclamations tonight. The local and all, we do proclamation of Ballet 58.
Yes.
Is there anyone here from 58?
Whereas Ballet 58 was founded in 2012 as a female and Latina-led professional ballet company and school headquartered in Orland Park and has since grown into a nationally-recognized leader in artistic excellence, storytelling, and accessible dance education. And whereas Ballet 58's work has earned national attention, including features on Good Morning America, The New Yorker, Vanity Fair, and Modern Luxury, elevating Orland Park's presence in the arts community across the country. And whereas Ballet 58 was established to inspire conversations about life, faith, and human dignity through powerful narrative ballet, challenging assumptions about who ballet is for, where it belongs, and the story it can tell. And whereas, in just over a decade, Ballet 58 has expanded from a small emerging studio to a thriving multi-branch nonprofit organization, serving thousands of students annually and touring original productions nationwide. And whereas Ballet 58 is now the largest nonprofit performing arts organization south of the city of Chicago and operates through three core pillars. The professional company, a nationally touring ensemble and resident company at the Hairs Theater in Millennium Art, ranks among the 50 largest ballet companies in the United States. The school of Ballet 58, offering high caliber pre-professional training and mentorship, with students regularly receiving scholarships to premier programs across the country. And the community engagement and education, including school performances, library partnerships, senior living outreach, and free or low-cost arts opportunities for families throughout the Southland. And whereas Ballet 58 continues to enrich the cultural landscape of Orland Park by inspiring emerging artists, providing transformative arts experiences for residents of all ages, and strengthening the village's identity as a growing hub for creativity and culture. And whereas, the Village of Orland Park is proud to recognize Ballet 58 for its artistic innovation, educational commitment, and ongoing contributions to the community. Now therefore, I, Jim Dodge, mayor of the Village of Orland Park, do hereby recognize Ballet 58 as the Business of the Month for December 2025, and commend its leadership, dancers, faculty, and staff for their outstanding service, talent, and dedication to enriching the lives of Orland Park residents. As witnesses thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Village of Orland Park to be affixed this first day of December 2025.
Thank you. Very proud to have Ballet 58 as part of the village, looking forward to many great things. Next item?
Proclamation honoring CTF Illinois.
All right. Very good. We do, all right.
We are about 13 years old, and we love being a part of the community here in Orland. We offer ballet both for people who are professionals from all over the U.S., but we also offer ballet training for kids ages two to 102. So if you love to dance, we're right here on Wolf and 183rd, and we offer so many things for our community to be able to enjoy, including performances, workshops, all kinds of fun stuff, and coming up in December, Beyond the Nutcracker, December 6th, 7th, 13th, and 14th at Lincoln Way North in Braver.
I don't know if everybody heard that, they're doing the Nutcracker, which is a great ballet, so that goes well. Thank you. Next item?
Proclamation honoring CTF Illinois.
All right. Also very proud to have the Community Organization of the Month, CTF, done with them a number of times, so let me make the proclamation. So whereas, CTF Illinois is a nonprofit organization dedicated to creating pathways towards independence, inclusion, and meaningful opportunity for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas, for more than 50 years, CTF Illinois has provided person-centered services including residential support, employment programs, community engagement, life skill development, and advocacy for individuals and families across the region. And whereas, CTF Illinois has demonstrated an ongoing commitment to empowering individuals to live self-directed, fulfilling lives, strengthening not only those that they serve, but the fabric of the communities in which they live. Whereas, CTF Illinois has been an active partner in the Orland Park community, offering support services, fostering volunteerism, collaborating with local organizations, and ensuring the residents with disabilities have equitable access to resources, social connection, and opportunity. And whereas, CTF Illinois played an instrumental role in maintaining essential state services for Orland Park residents by providing temporary space for the Secretary of State facility, ensuring uninterrupted access for seniors, families, and vulnerable individuals. And whereas, the Village of Orland Park values compassion, dignity, accessibility, and inclusion, principles that are demonstrated daily through the work and mission of CTF Illinois. And whereas, the Village wishes to honor that organization, whose impact, service, and dedication strengthen community well-being, expand opportunity, contribute to a more inclusive and supportive Orland Park for all of its residents. Now, therefore, I, Jim Dodge, mayor of Orland Park, do hereby recognize CTF Illinois as the Community Organization of the Month for December 25th, 2025, excuse me, and encourage residents to join in acknowledging the meaningful contribution they make, their advocacy, and their commitment to enhancing lives within our community, dated December 1st, 2025. So thank you both. We have a famous name visitor. Come on down. Come up and introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about CTF. You gotta introduce yourself.
My name is Tony Barrett, and I'm the president and CEO of CTF Illinois, Communities That Transform Futures. And I am just the servant leader of this organization that is throughout Illinois, but we also have Hope Eachens, a cell program, community integrated living arrangement, housing four young ladies here at Orland Park. We also have a packaging organization here, and we have Saint Xavier University. We took over that building, and that's where our main corporate office is. And we have, we take care of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities throughout Illinois. And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is not only taking care of the individuals that we're privileged to serve, but taking care of the communities that we're in. So when we had the opportunity to help out Orland Park and stepped up with Leslie Genullius and the mayor, we did that through my board of directors. So on behalf of myself, board of directors, the employees of CTF, and especially the individuals we serve every day, thank you very much for the privilege of this award. Thank you.
No, thank you. I think you do great work, so thank you. All right. We'll do video then. We have a good presentation.
Please. For this prestigious award for Organization of the Month in Orland Park. Here at CTF Illinois, we take care of over 700 individuals throughout the state of Illinois. We have 36 residential group homes, and we have eight day programs, all of which take care of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities throughout the state. We also employ 450 individuals to take care of our homes. We take care of individuals, but we also focus on how we can take care of our community. So thank you again for this great award. It's an honor to accept it on behalf of myself, my board of directors, our staff, and especially the people we take care of.
Thank you, Ken, for what you guys do. Appreciate it. We have a quick, we have a good proclamation for your time. Do you want to introduce your fellow traveling?
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce our development director. This is Elise, who's my right-hand person, and she's been a tremendous supporter in making all this happen as well.
You? Ken, it's all right. Thanks, Ken. Good to see you. Next item, please.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comments.
Is anyone signed in?
I have not received anything.
Is there anyone who would like to address the board on the item today on the committee? On the board? Okay. So the way it works, we'll give you three minutes. Please identify yourself when you come on.
Excuse me. Orland Township, I would like to make reference to the annexation of Orland Park.
Okay. We need your name.
My name is Pat Amon.
Okay.
Here tonight, on behalf of my community and neighbors, to make something very clear, we do not support this annexation. And I think a good majority of the communities here can show that if you guys want to raise hands. The present paperwork and the annexation doesn't really give much value in terms of the advantage to the neighborhood. There's no upgrades to water systems, no improvements to septic, drainage, stormwater, or roads. None of the basic services that usually justify an annexation are being offered. Yet we can be expected to pay higher property taxes and take on more regulations, more ordinance, and more permits with zero benefits in return. Also, keep in mind that a lot of the residents of the neighborhood have been faced with unincorporated terms of living. Our neighborhood has operated independently for decades. We maintain our own systems, spent a lot of money on our water and septic, and done so without any issues. We're not asking the village for any help, and we're not struggling to community and adding the utilities that the village is looking to offer. The annexation would simply force us into higher costs and tireable while offering nothing that improves our daily lives on a immediate basis, especially given that the road has just been fixed by the township, and especially given that there's no replacing of the water systems. Make very clear in the paperwork. The village has mentioned its legal authority under Illinois statutes to annex land under 60 acres, but having authority doesn't mean it's wanted or justified. You do have discretion, and as people of the neighborhood, we do ask that you guys do not move forward with that annexation. You're not required to move forward with something that the community clearly opposes, especially when there's no need, no benefit, and no request from those entities themselves. We've already started collecting signatures, which I have some petition to take from homeowners and property owners across the neighborhood, but they're not just signatures. They're people who intentionally chose for the unincorporated for or ability. This annexation will make a direct impact on the financials of our neighborhood and help people in our capable resources. Annexation, excuse me, annexation also strips all of that away, and the turnout in the community that you're seeing tonight also just shows how opposed this item on today's schedule really is. It's also a matter of trust. People are expecting their local governments to act according to our interests, and pushing through annexation of the project itself. Self-disagnosance, there's no immediate benefit, does not do anything but create frustration and a lot of confusion. And we are asking the board to step back and think about how this impacts the families who actually live here, and if the village cannot clearly explain the value of the improvements or the necessity of annexing us, the only decision is to withdraw or vote against. Sorry, Paul, to actual these.
Sure. Terminate. Thanks.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Just come up and identify yourself.
Oh, Lord. My name is Tim Miller. I am the owner of the owner tax property. I'm a repairist. I've been here for 30 years, and a little nervous about the annexation, mainly because of like a billboard on my property that's been there for 20-some years, 25 years. And I have a container vet that I use, I store my snow equipment in and my lawn equipment to keep the properties nice as I do. I've never had any complaints in 30 years. Slade's perfect. Gymnastics, it's pretty comfortable hanging at the home. Everything's not perfect. So I'm a little worried about my property rights pertaining to the cell tower that's there, the billboard that's already there, the container that's been there that keeps my equipment out of the weather, not exposed like your stuff down the street here, you know? You need it to keep it in the snow. I keep it inside out of the weather. It's been that way for 25 years. And that's a little of the concerns that you guys don't want. They have like, they want 12 months for me to get rid of it now. I've never had a problem before for 30 years. So that's, that's kind of concerning now. I got these concerns that I've never had before. And so, yeah, and then the billboard that's been there, and I get income off that, and clear channels that are now first, I know he gives all money, or I sort, I can't even drink, but still I do get income off it. So that's a problem. So I just want to address these issues. Like I said, I've never had an issue with keeping my property clean, but I keep my snow equipment and the rest of it inside. Can't see it. It's 200, 300 feet back, but Orland Park doesn't want it. They don't like containers too, or a shed or storage. So those are my concerns. And I don't want my rights to keep that thing off.
Okay. No, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone else like to address the board?
How are you guys? Hey, hey. My name is Michael Stubble. I live at 1040 Pine Creek Lane, and I wanted to voice a few concerns regarding the 26 budget. When reviewing the budget across several years, there appears to be a structural shift happening, especially in personnel costs, which make up the largest and most permanent portion of the village's operating expenses. Looking at prior board approved budgets, total salary benefits were planned at about $50 million in 2023, $54 million in '24, $54 million in '25, and then jumped to $61 million in '26. That's an $11 million increase, or 22% in just three years, roughly 6.5% annual growth, which is higher than to the homelessness and labor and benefit trends. Even comparing to the 26, even comparing 26 to 35, personnel costs still rise 11% year over year. This points to a meaningful shift, points to a meaningful shift to a higher long-term cost structure. The 2026 proposal also adds multiple new overtime positions across departments. These roles create recurring long-term obligations that occur each year due to raises, benefits, and passionate goals. Some additions may very well be necessary, but the broader trend is clear. Permanent costs are rising, and there aren't corresponding reductions, and that's where it'll offset them. In a corporate setting, typically when a department wants to be headcount, they're generally expected to identify savings, tell a fund it. Reasoning straightforward, additions without offsets create deficits. The risk here is similar. Long-term personnel operating costs appear to be growing fast, and the village is stable recurring revenue sources. Over time, that kind of imbalance poses tough choices. Higher taxes for reduced services will remind us of those fixes. This is especially relevant given today's economic climate, where both public and private organizations are tightening spending for reasons higher rate of reducing staff. It's reasonable for residents to expect that same kind of discipline from the government. Additionally, regarding the police staffing, during the October 24 meeting, it was stated that switching to 12-hour shifts would increase the cost by roughly $25,000. However, the 26 budget shows an increase of over $3 million. There may be a valid explanation, but the difference is large enough that a clarification would be helpful, be course agreeable. Ultimately, my concern is that the 26 proposal increases long-term operating costs at a pace that recurring revenues can't support, and if this trend continues to develop, we face growing financial pressure that ultimately affects residents and businesses. So lastly, my suggestion is for the board to review the 26 personnel increases with multi-year lens, if it hasn't been done yet, specifically in three- and five-year forecasts comparing recurring revenues with recurring personnel expenses. That'll determine, you know, whether to expand any cost structures to secure most residents one way or future, where taxes and taxing could be a recurring solution. It's your time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the board?
Mayor Dodge, fellow trustees, thanks for your time.
I need your name.
My name is Corin Tablis. I'm a resident here, also a property owner here. I am here to state my opposition to the proposed use of eminent domain on 159th Street. Eminent domain is one of the most extreme powers a government can exercise, and Illinois statute law requires a clear, necessary, and legitimate public use for the greater public use, not speculation, not convenience, and certainly not redevelopment that ultimately benefits private interests. And if that's the case, then there needs to be transparency. Amancipality cannot simply declare property condemned. A statute demands a documented public, sorry, a documented public necessity proven to be the least intrusive option supported by evidence. So I ask directly, what is this specific public use? Why is it legally necessary? Who is the true beneficiary of this? Without clear answers, the village risks violating both state law and constitutional protections of landowners. Illinois courts that have repeatedly ruled against municipalities that prematurely are without proper justification, and there is a string of cases to support this. Many towns have spent millions in litigation and had condemnations overturned because they failed to meet the legal threshold. The board should not expose the village to that kind of legal and financial liability. There is also a business owner on one of the properties who has a valid lease and has paid rent since March, has complied with every regulation, and still cannot open due to government-created delays. Why is the village, what is the village's legal responsibility to him for the loss of his income and damages caused by this process? Why was he allowed to go forward only to be stalled now? Property owners have every constitutional right to retain their land. They pay taxes, they follow the law, and villages do not have the authority to take the property simply because it prefers a different use or because another party wants it. If any board member here were facing eminent domain action on your home or on your business, you would defend your rights aggressively. Those same rights apply to the people on 159th Street. I've been impacted by eminent domain in Orland Park, and when it came to the riding of the range road, but 159 isn't being expanded, so why do you need to take this challenge? Before voting, I urge the board to consider legal consequences, ethical implications, and financial exposure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Hi, I'm Zoe L.A. I'm here also to speak on the annexation of the unincorporated area of Orland off of 110th Court. You know, my neighbors speak very clearly about the, you know, lack of that add-on that it gives us. We all bought in that general area for a specific reason. Myself included, the area of property I bought specifically was zoned for horses. That is very difficult to find in a lot of different areas. So, you know, really not having any benefits or add-on to, you know, bringing us into Orland, which, again, I think that we can all agree that, you know, Orland, we enjoy, you know, 100%, but again, without the add-on of sewer water, which I know would cost, you know, I'm in construction all my life, you guys know the general feel of a job of that nature, and the increased cost that we're going to, you guys will be looking for for taxes that we read on the paperwork that we're running that was sent to us, just doesn't seem to add up for any reason other than really can't figure it out myself. But, you know, there's a lot of concerns in the community in regards to, you know, reading this area into Orland. You know, we're all kind of opposed to it. We all enjoy that small country feel that we kind of get to enjoy every morning out there without, especially that specific road being a dead, there's no through traffic, there's no real utility or reasoning of reading it or, you know, what reason. I still am trying to figure that one out, but, you know, again, we're all pretty opposed to it. It's a concern that we have specifically in my family because of the property that we bought specifically for the reasons that we use. You know, people seem to come by through the walking paths that you guys have to enjoy up. We often, you know, share that with the community as they walk through the area and let them come in, you know, sit there, have their kids pet the horses, and they all seem to be pretty happy with the situation as it is. We do too. Thank you.
No, thank you. Any other comments?
Hello. My name is Sean Kelly. I'm part of the annexation committee as well. We're opposed to it. Reading the letter, it said that you do the streets and do snow removal. Well, the township just repaired a road, and it snowed really, really bad on the weekend and some of, out our snow. So we don't really see any benefit besides our taxes going up. Every single home on our street is well, as well as septic. We enjoy being part of the township.
With praise.
I think I want to pay more taxes if we don't see any benefit, which, as you can see, the people from my street talk right now, we don't really see a benefit. So I just want to share my concern that I oppose the annexation.
Thank you. Other comments?
Worries about the resident helping annexation block. The only concern and the most concern I have is that I'm not going to get city water except on my expense. So I understood when my wall goes out, I have to tap into the city water. I'm not allowed to replace my valve, at least that's what I was told. So on my expense to tap into the city water is going to be extremely expensive, and then who puts in the sewer? Now we're on city water with still septic. When, and do I tap into the sewer, and how does that happen? That is going to be a huge expense for the block, and I don't know why we would have to have that expense on us. And if you want us to hand it in, then you should pay for our water and our sewers in that block. That's going to be really, really expensive for the whole block to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to take this item up in a second. We'll go back to the regular agenda item order now. Next item?
Accounts payable November 18th, 2025 through December 1st, 2025, looking for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make amendment two.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make amendment to this motion. Should I wait until after the motion is read?
What's the amendment?
I would like to take off one vendor on the bills.
Do we see anything to remove?
Pardon me?
Remove a vendor from the...
One vendor for being incorrect.
Why don't we just... Do you want to... What do you prefer, George?
I think the easiest... Let's probably just do the motion and then amend it.
We'll look for a motion approved in a second, then we'll discuss the other. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
It'd be a motion to approve the... As constituted, and then there'll be an amendment to that.
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to approve the accounts payable November 18th through December 1st, 2025 in the amount of $2,315,170.36.
Which is amended?
There's a motion in a second. Trustee Katsinas?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask to amend the motion to remove the last vendor on our pay list, which was, if you stand it here. A law firm in the amount of $225,000.
What... I'm sorry, what's the law? What's the law firm?
Hold on a second. It's right here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to know what it's for on this one.
What is working there?
The law...
Go ahead, Trustee.
The law firm is Hughes Soko Pier Resident LTD in the amount of $225,000. Their very last entry.
So there's a suggestion to delete this. Hang on one second. George Lewis's law firm, and what's the bill for?
This is the settlement for leaders.
Sanchez.
So there's no issue about the legitimacy of the bill. We're going to have to pay it eventually?
Yep.
Trustee Katsinas, you want to have a motion to not pay them, but we'll call that motion separately?
If we could kindly, thank you.
Sure, and make a motion to remove that payment?
I'd make a motion to remove the payment of $225,000 to the law firm of Hughes Soko Pierce Resident LTD in the amount of $225,000.
Is there a second for that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
According to... I am going to abstain from this motion because I have a business relationship with another vendor. But did that preclude me from voting on... If you're looking at the mic board, if I precluded from voting on this motion?
You precluded from voting on this?
This?
No, if you wouldn't, if you were going to vote on...
I'm going to abstain from the general vote.
I don't see any reason why I can't vote on the motion.
No, no, not the...
Trustee Healy, you can vote on the motion to remove this accounts payable issue.
Thank you.
So is that a second?
Yep, that's it.
All right, second. All right. There's a motion in the second to delete payment to the law firm that Trustee Katsinas specified. Call the roll of that motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we can't ask questions.
Sure. Trustee Lawrence?
I'm just... Can I ask why is that a legitimate question?
It's absolutely legitimate. I mean, I guess the question should be put to Trustee Katsinas. Why do you want to delete this payment?
You... That's assuming that you're going to vote... If you're voting in unison with the next item as it comes up later in the agenda.
Do you want to delay the accounts payable, which would be simpler?
That's fine with me.
All right. Do you and Trustee Healy want to withdraw your motion?
I withdraw the motion, and we will wait until after.
All right. Please, this call, listen to the next layer.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Platt?
I would just like to know what page this reference is on. There are 43 pages in this document. If you just have a reference to a page, that would be helpful, page 13.
All right. For the attorney, what's the easiest way to hold this until later?
Let's do a motion to table for later.
I make a motion to table the accounts payable until after that item is read. And the item is number...
I heard it's made on 19.
19.
All right. There's a motion. I need a second, so we can table this for a moment. Second. There's a motion in the second to table consideration of accounts payable. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt? Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Consent agenda, please.
Proceed to the consent agenda. A. Payroll for November 21st, 2025 approval. B. STP Phase 2 Engineering, 143rd Street, 131st Street, and Orland Parkway. Contract change order number one and addendum A. C. 2026 Potable Water Sampling Proposal. D. Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, which is SCADA, Support Services Contract for 2026. E. Traffic Signal Maintenance for Village State County Roadways Renewal. F. G.O. Refunding Bonds Series 2016 Abatement to 2025 Levy Ordinance. G. G.O. Refunding Bonds Series 2021A and 2021B Abatement, 2025 Levy Ordinance. H. G.O. Refunding Bonds Series 2021C Abatement to 2025 Levy Ordinance. I. G.O. Refunding Bonds Series 2022A Abatement to 2025 Levy Ordinance. J. G.O. Refunding Bonds Series 2023 Abatement to 2025 Levy Ordinance. K. G.O. Refunding Bonds Series 2025 Abatement to 2025 Levy Ordinance. L. An Ordinance Amending Title 1, J. 14 of the Orland Park Village Code in regard to the imposition of non-monetary relief by the administrative hearing officer. M. Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, I.L.E.A.S., Less Lethal Alternatives for Law Enforcement Grant of Purchase. N. Fleet Management Software Agreement. O. Dick's Sporting Goods House of Sport Redevelopment Agreement Ordinance. P. Tinley Creek Streambank Stabilization Construction Contract Award Recommendation. And Q. Cleragov Annual Subscription for the Digital Budget Book, Capital Budgeting, Operational Budgeting, Personnel Budgeting, and Transparency Platforms.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Platt?
I move to approve items A through Q of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Any removals?
Mr. Chairman, may I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Typically, when we have something on the committee of the whole, we then have it at the next prior Board of Trustees meeting. And I know two of the items that were on the committee of the whole are right now on the Board of Trustees. And they only say that if the public might have any questions or if any trustees has any questions or wants to do research. I know we used to take it from the committee of the whole, Board of Trustees, when it was a time-sensitive pressing issue, and it didn't seem to be done that much. So I'm just wondering if this is the new way we're going to do it.
What items in particular, Trustee Katsinas? What items in particular?
Well, we talked about Dixon, Tinley Creek. They're both around the committee of the whole, and now they're on the Board of Trustees. Typically, we would wait to two weeks. If residents or anyone had any questions, they were able to do their research before we did the same two agenda items back-to-back in the same evening.
Fair enough. One of the things that I'd like to do since we get to the new year is have a complete rethink of all the operating roles for the board to clarify all these types of issues. Because we've had a number of different approaches and styles of conducting meetings over the years. And so whether we do it as a special meeting or we do it as a go-to-the-whole, committee of the whole, I'd like to have a conversation on how to conduct our meetings.
And may that also include when a trustee can address a staff member?
Sure.
Thank you.
And then we'll also address how formal we want to be on Robert School's board, which addresses those issues.
100%, and everybody's treated equally.
Absolutely. I'll make sure of it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any removals from the consent agenda? There's a motion in the second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Passes. We'll now proceed to the public hearing portion of our meeting.
We need a motion to go in public hearing for purposes of discussing tax levy?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into a public hearing for the 2025 property tax levy. Second.
There's a motion in the second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
We're now in a public hearing for the proposed tax levy. George, is there any presentations?
At this...
I'm sorry, the time is 53. George?
So this is a procedural step as part of the proof of taxation. Even though the village's tax levy has not increased 105% or 5% over, the village for full transparency makes this available. So it coincides with what has been discussed in previous meetings.
Is there any members of the public who would like to address the board about the proposed tax levy? Any members of the public who would like to address the board on this tax levy? Any comments or questions from the board while we're in public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
We'll adjourn the public hearing for 2025 property tax levy.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Call the roll. Close the public hearing, please.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye. Public hearing is closed at 7:54. Next item.
Public hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026.
Is there a motion to go to public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Platt?
I move... I move... I'm sorry, the motion says I move to adjourn the fiscal year 2026. But that's not what I want to say. Well, I was... I moved to adjourn the fiscal year 2026 budget public hearing. I don't know why.
No, that... We need to open.
I know, it's incorrect. So I moved to open the fiscal year 2026 budget public hearing.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Call the roll.
Trustee... Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye. 7:55, we start the public hearing of the budget.
Procedure... The procedural step for the approval of our budget. The budget process started approximately six months ago. We've had a workshop. And we... We also presented the budget publicly. So if later on in the agenda, we'll go into a little more details. Not as much as the workshop, but a little more details, not too much.
Is there any members of the public who would like to address the board about the proposed budget? Well, we'll ask one more time. Any members of the public who'd like to speak about the proposed budget for 2026? Okay. Hearing that, any comments from the board during public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
We'll adjourn the fiscal year 2026 budget public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Mr. Mayor? The... In the legislative text, it says I move to adjourn the fiscal year 2026 budget public hearing. I wish to make it clear that my motion was as amended because I moved to open it. I ran an objection to closing to adjourn it at this time. But I think it's important to mention that in the legislation text on our agenda, it says... That's what it says.
Okay.
And so my vote is aye.
Thank you for clarifying.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trust... Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Public hearing ended at 7:57. Next item, please.
Okay. Public safety. An intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Orland Park and the Village of Tinley Park to use the Orland Park Police Training Facility Range, Use of Force Simulator, and the EOC/Training Room, which is located at 10609 West 163rd Place, Orland Park. Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to approve the authorization and execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Orland Park and the Village of Tinley Park to use the Orland Park Police Training Facility Range, Use of Force Simulator, EOC/Training Room, and its facilities and equipment for training purposes. And authorize the village manager to execute the agreement upon approval of the board.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Any comments or questions from the board on this agreement with Tinley Park?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Looking back at the history of the training facility and previous discussions we had, I think the original decisions that we had made, we were not going to approach other entities to leverage this facility. But however, since we've evolved, you know, I think, you know, now it's a dedicated range and training facility. You know, these things cost money to run, right? So, you know, I think it does make sense to allow other municipalities to leverage it and assist in the maintenance and managing each facility. That being said, I still think the priority needs to continue to be training and educating our police department. First and foremost, that should be our priority. Anything else is second, right? So if people are, you know, signing up to use this facility, we just need to make sure we're proud of it.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
Just wanted to echo what Trustee Malani said. And also, excuse me, Tinley Park is our neighbor. We've worked well with them. And when we, you know, one plus one, working with Tinley comes out to three. So proud to be able to have a facility where we get called on from other departments wanting to use it after having, you know, shooting range in years. So it's a good thing, and I look forward to continuing working together. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? The... Well, this came together that we, the Village of Orland Park, were allowed to use on occasion the Tinley Park Shooting Range when our range was taken offline. And, you know, I think this will work out pretty well. Trustee Malani, I would say that we're very mindful about the priority is usage. As we've made very clear to the chief and to the deputy chief, this is a way to offset the cost for the building. And we're being a good neighbor to Tinley. They were a good neighbor for us. Well, we needed a training facility on our previous range, which was not a garage, but was a purpose-built old-school range, was torn down in anticipation of no other place for our police officers to train. Quite frankly, I'm proud of the fact that we can help out Tinley Park here. There's a motion in the second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
An ordinance annexing territory pursuant to 65 ILCES 5/7-1-13, which is Wolf Road, 171st Street to 175th Street.
There are ten emotions. We can open this up for broad discussion. I think everybody here cares about these next couple of items, so let's talk it through. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled "Anonyming Territory pursuant to 65 ILCES 5/7-1-13, Wolf Road, 171st Street to 175th Street." Second.
All right. So we all went up the conversation, George, is there a presentation?
Yes.
Talking about this. For the folks in the audience, typically, most boards don't respond directly to public comments. So it's like, now's the time. We heard what she said, right? We want to make sure everybody understands we heard what everyone said. Now we want to talk through some of these individual items. George, you present this, or is...
See.
Steve.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the... This is the fifth and final phase of this portion of negotiations along Wolf Road. Just to kind of bring everybody up to speed on what's happened in the past. So initially, old Cortez is in the village. The village, while in fact, purchased the property directly to north of that. Recently, that property was annexed into the village. Then the property that the village acquired from Bus Barn property, that property was then annexed into the village. Following that, properties north of Bus Barn, which included the residence on Crystal Drive, and also Joey's Hot Dogs was annexed into the village. And this is the last portion of that. A lot of the reason for this is about the Wolf Road properties. I will point out that our parcels were brought into the village voluntarily. The other ones were brought to the village involuntarily. To have involuntary annexation, it has to be an area of less than a certain size, which it is, and it's all or nothing. So for us to get control of the properties so that we can properly maintain, control quality of development on Wolf Road, the properties on one hundred tenth court have to come in with this. So that's the reason why we're bringing this entire orange section and adjacent rights of way into, road rights of way into the vote at this time. This is the current zoning, the C four zoning is along Wolf and the R four zoning, the residential properties. This is some of the uses that are allowed in the county zoning. When properties are brought into the village involuntarily, they're by default on the state residential, which is E one. Any future changes, then they'll be brought through through a zoning change. Just for... Any uses that are pre-existing are allowed to continue in their current state. Any improvements that you make to your property legally with the permit of the county, those improvements will stand. It's only when you're ready to make a change to the property will the village codes apply. Some uses, like in E one, we do allow forces under certain circumstances, there are other questions about force. So that might be something that's allowed. But these are all things that you can talk about in your memorandum of understanding, which you all have the opportunity to talk about, about pre-existing uses that are on your property. There were some concerns about hooking up to water and sewer. It is true that the county, once your well fails or your septic fails, you will not be allowed to replace it. So that we've heard this over and over and over again from them. And we will now have that opportunity to be able to hook up to our system. We are not requiring you to do that at this time. But when you're ready for that, when it's time to do that, we will have those services available for you. Okay, maybe that's all I got. Okay. There you go.
Yeah, can I ask a question? Steve, are you finished?
Yes, sir. Steve, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Hang, hang one second, sir. George, anything you want to add?
Yeah, so we're here now, this whole thing started with the repo lots that were being proposed for the whole Bus Barn. That was happening in the county and they were going through the process. So ultimately, the village purchased that and that made available all of these other parcels that we can, the village can actually control to avoid repo lots, used car locations. We had, on one of the properties, there was a, we heard from somebody that was on woke, was looking to put a used car lot and repair facility. So our, as Steve mentioned, the residential property, because of the way the law works, they have to be annexed as well. But afterwards, after the annexation, as mentioned in the letter, an M O U can agree upon, it will come back, that will ultimately be for the board to cover any of the pre-existing uses.
So there's a gentleman in the back who wanted to ask a quick question with forbearance in the board. We'll kind of allow that discussion. But I just want to make sure everybody heard that, that we're not forcing you to change or do anything tomorrow, right? The county ultimately is going to force you not to open back up a well or to have to fix the septic. So that's one of the things that's in the background here. We're not going to change anything. That's why we do a memorandum of understanding with all of these properties that are annexed. We've done this before, the village has over many years. So it's a number of issues that we can work out. And we don't have any real interest in changing these things. As Steve said, I think the word is legal, not conforming use.
If, if it's legal, not conforming, your property might be legal. They might be legal under our code.
I'm sorry.
I will tell you that we did have one residential property that came in voluntarily and he asked us to come out and do an inspection so we can establish a baseline. And then anything changed beyond that. So there was a document that was produced for that particular property about what was the pre-existing addition at the time of annexation.
Is anybody going to have to get rid of the horses?
No, 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 because especially they're coming in as E one.
Yeah, you can continue. And I know this is an issue with another property that we were looking to about keeping other kinds of animals and that get part of the M O U. But there might be a legal path forward on that one depending on the size of your lot, so.
And what Steve is mentioning, and in another circumstance, there was a, somebody had goats and they wanted to keep goats. And we were going to work that out with another property through the M O U.
Is anybody in the board object if you have a gentleman speaking? Just give your name, you got to answer.
I'm Sean Kelly. So definitely understand why we need to be annexed to the whole bigger picture. Make sure there's no used car dealership, it definitely makes sense. And I do understand, okay, there's some time, right? So we don't have to come up with well water, we don't have septic, it's okay, right? But let's say my septic system fails tomorrow, right? Are we connected to a sewer system? I'm in the middle of a debit, in the very middle. So I have a septic, I can't get another septic tank in there. How do I connect to the sewer system, to the only sewers? So that's, that's a huge concern for me. Result of the, I literally just did it in wealth doing two. Good, right? Got to last for twenty years hopefully. But mainly the septic, I'm in this house about nineteen forty-seven. We bought it in twenty twenty-three. We're, we're literally in the middle and I don't, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't see any sewer systems along the way. Are you doing something like that? So obviously with my loss of septic, I understand that, you know, if I have to redo the septic, it's only twenty dollars, thirty dollars, four thousand. But what if I can't get into the sewer system? And who's going to pay for that? And now my family can use it.
No, it's, thank you, right? It's a great question because I think, Steve, the way it works, the county won't let them. They can rebuild their septic, but it's the wells that the county is most concerned about.
They don't want the septic, they don't want the septic anywhere either. When the septic fails.
So what happens in the next situation?
So in a hypothetical, in a hypothetical situation like that?
It's a nineteen forty-seven built, the septic's like twenty years old, the maintenance center bought it in twenty twenty-three. What do I do?
According to the lawyer, the county would make you connect. If it happens to you tomorrow, like, don't wish this on you. If you were unincorporated, the county would make you connect.
I would fit, connect.
I'm literally, you know, like, you would have been...
If I could, I, I went through one of these, I went through a number of these in another community where they had their own water system, they had their own sewer system. And it got to the point where Illinois State's Attorney Office gets involved and says, your homes now become uninhabitable because the county won't allow that. So the great thing is, you, you have access to the village now. So, but what happened in those circumstances, to get sewer there or to get water, the, there was an S S A that was established. And it was something that was put on, the village went and made all the improvements and over the course of twenty or thirty years, it was repaid through just the railroad water bill. And, and it was usually what ends up happening to the benefit of the residents. It's usually done at a zero rate of screen. So it's, it's, it's free catch, right? It's a zero percent catch. So there's a lot that we'd have to go into that. We'd have to obviously work out all that and engineering that the village would do. But all of that gets negotiated at that time.
Definitely understand that, and that's good, but, you know, once you go to the back of the septic, this is the worst case scenario, right? New septic, maybe two weeks, maybe a month. How long does it take to get through all that process? So I guess if there is, if there's an annexation, my main concern is, can we start a process where we put sewer lines on our land immediately? So then if mine or one of my neighbors' septic goes out and they're literally in the middle, I don't know if you went through, went through one hundred and, what is it, debit? It's not there.
It, it, no, I'm sorry, I need to speak over there. It, I went through this when I was trustee of the Woods, which is eighty-second avenue, I think, if I got it right. The subdivision was built unincorporated in the county many years ago and everybody started to have system failures at about the same time. Collectively, the neighborhood came to the village and as George said, everybody agreed, we're going to do the infrastructure, the pipes, all, all the connections. And then those homeowners paid for it over the course of twenty years. And the village basically financed it in terms of, you know, zero cost to the residents. So we could start planning for this tomorrow. And I think you have that commitment from the village, you start laying, looking at the engineering, start getting the costs together, what would it take to put this together? So I'm not wishing anybody's septic system or wells fail tomorrow, that's not the point here. But it kind of has to be great if the neighbors all agree. Because for us to do a special service area, you and all your neighbors would say, yes, we're all going to chip in. I'll make it up a number now, totally made up for illustration purposes. We're going to chip in another hundred, two hundred, whatever the cost is per year for the next twenty years for the homes to build the infrastructure so you can connect to them. So that's typically how it's worked in the past. And that's what the village has talked to the other areas about, that you work out these long-term arrangements that benefits everyone, because you're right, it's a debit, so you have to put the basic infrastructure there to, for you to connect. So hopefully the well is stable for years and you don't need the water. And hopefully you have good luck with the septic systems without trying to force us on that hard on the E one.
Yeah, we were working on, and here was another residential development and they, one of the, we were coming with different options. And one of them that they talked about was they all start paying, you'll fund every month like an association would. And when the expense came, the money would be there a little bit every month, like the, like the homeowners association. We did another one on Old Tammerack where the residents put the money upfront to put in the whole system. And then as the undeveloped lots came in, they reimbursed the original homeowners or the homeowners at the time that were still in the houses, they got their mortgage back.
Because the other thing I'd like to...
We have options, I guess.
We do have options and I don't think anybody's envisioning, you know, curves, start water, you know, all that. That is, we can work that out. So the critical piece seems to be the water and starting the sewer connections.
Yeah, I mean, I do...
They want to disrupt the nature of the area.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, ideally, I think me and everyone on our side, we do not want this enforcement to have it so that you're able to legally annex things that you want to annex. And I think it's going to be a great detriment to us. But if it must happen, which we don't want it to happen, but we're going to say it, there's some big concerns that can, with the septic, mainly, well, whatever, if we get water, I'll buy water, whatever. The septic is the biggest thing. And some of these houses are, are one of the reminders. So if we're forced to do this, there's got to be some movement towards where I don't have to wait three months to be able to do it or whatever, or whatever, right? And that's when it's going to happen, so it does. So I hope that you guys both know, but it looks like that's a very nice chart that you guys have decided. Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Mayor?
One second, I have trustee Lawrence, trustee Lee Blatt and trustee Lawrence. Love it. Very good.
So, okay, me? Okay. I, my question is, so we, I had a question based on what, what we were just discussing in terms of... There's a, there's, the village can enter into an agreement with the residents as long as all the residents are on board with regard to sewer and septic. If something were to happen to, I think what the president was asking, if something happened to his septic system tomorrow, how would he proceed after, or, excuse me, after annexation, pardon me? How would he proceed, which is different than how he would proceed now?
Appreciate, you want to take that?
So, Mayor, I was looking at just a map here. It's not like we have to put an entirely new system. I'm looking at eastwards, they have Bear Creek Drive, which is part of, we're just crossing all of that. So that's the shortest distances that we have. Once this easement is settled, we would want to have, sorry, once this annexation is settled, we would want to have some easements where public infrastructure could go in and then they could be tied to the existing system that we have on Bear Creek Drive or Bear Creek, sorry, Bear Point Drive. Those are the closest to the two streets that are there. But we would have to take a look at what the overall system would look like. Secondly, to answer your question, if their system fails today, what are we that they're going to take? It's not going to be a one-day solution if their system fails. So yes, when, so until our system comes into place and they don't repair their system to contain, but with the commitment that they're going to be connected to our system.
Trustee Lawrence?
I mean, I'm sorry.
Hey, hang on for a second, trustee Lawler?
A question for the attorney, Mr. Solomon. Did I hear you say correctly that if Cook County currently does not allow the rebuild of septic system? So it's even beyond us, if you lose your septic system now, tomorrow, let's say, it would be on you, you wouldn't be able to rebuild this, you would have, you would not be able to use your house. So you'd have no...
I, I, we started, we bought a house and put in a septic.
I'm sorry, sir, I mean, I don't mind the back and forth, but you got to come up to the microphone because this is recording a public meeting.
Sorry.
So I hate to make you do it again, but you got to reintroduce yourself.
My neighbor just bought a house and put a septic system in a year ago.
Permitted?
Yeah.
Rarely that occurs, so.
It just, it just happens.
All right.
Steve? We've been told multiple times, I guess there's absolutely no way there are anywhere nearby for a connection. I don't know why that was allowed to occur because there's a, there are stubs like one hundred and seventy-second street and also one hundred and seventy-fifth. So I, I don't, we were not notified about that. Normally they ask, I believe they ask on other ones and we've let them know what the situation was. So I don't know why we weren't consulted on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katzenis?
Just had a question on the, when you look at the plat there, I guess it's more of an attorney question. Can you use the railroad right away?
That doesn't count. Yes, you can use it right away. Which, this is entirely proper. It can be used.
We got our packet cutted off, so it was unclear that corner, right up in the corner. Yeah, see, we couldn't see the little tail on it, that it goes up to make that whole wholly bound. I guess is the verbiage. So in your opinion, based on looking at a bigger survey, this property is wholly bound?
The team that did the annexation had of the opinion that yes, it's entirely contiguous and it's eligible to be annexed. So it's kind of similar about the saying that every people jump over four reserves or combat right away. So the, the area is not included in the area of the annexation, but it's considered to be touching, contiguous for the purpose of the statute.
Could we get the map or something that shows everything that what is in Orland? Because that was really hard to look at. You know, I know the presentation was on that, but just, just to make sure it's contiguous. But also the other thing is, is, you know, I would hope the board would consider possibly tabling this because it's my concern, the residents got this notification by their own schedule in a very short timeframe. Looks like it went out November fourteenth, that there was a publication and then there was certified now. So this is a very narrow window and it seems like there's a lot of what ifs. So maybe if we could, you know, we can table this, we can try to address with stamp.
It would start a whole legal court again, if it does, a problem.
Oh, okay. Let me take that back.
Sir, do you want to back up?
Yeah.
Just read her issues off.
Hello, Tim Miller, owner of the auto repair facility. More concerned, coupled with served many times that, you know, somebody might have put a model sales in on repair. For years, particularly there. And why, why, why can't we do these memorandums for these people there prior to the annexation? Why do we have to come back and, oh, we give it and it's pretty costly, you know? You're likely a social resur, you guys don't like that, you don't mind about repair. Your, I'm sorry, your was considered illegal, not conforming.
Your, I'm sorry, your was considered illegal, non-conforming, I guess, is there any laws, do you come here and get this permit, or is it free? Your existing uses allowed, future uses would not.
Well, if you have special use permit, it would-
Special use, right.
Would not, as a matter of right. I think the issue is more that the county has not done a really, really good job of property maintenance of uses along that street. You have done an incredible job of keeping the property-
I did this weekend for three days.
So-
Down Wolf Road, that-
A property, something that got a special use permit would be able to exist under conditions, and we maintain those, just like all the other places that are in our village that are kept in a good state of, I guess, is public.
Come back to that, I'm worried that I've already been doing.
Let, let, yeah, let's, let's be clear, right?
Okay.
So, you know-
I'm getting a little nervous, search match and auto repair.
No, there was, there was other applications.
Okay.
North of your property and other property that we don't want to have auto repair shops, I work with a lot of junkyards.
But, I, I-
And so one of the things I'm, sorry?
I'm a little concerned about, you know, if you want to annex it, okay, why not address these issues with these memorandums prior to, hey, he's, he's a special use permit, but he's concerned about getting his tack in, and you want something written down, I get it, right, why, you know, they're all nervous.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I, I just stick it up for you guys.
I'd be nervous, okay? A few years ago, we did send notices to all the properties that were coming out of annexation, whoever the taxpayer record was, which I know a lot of people have things in LLCs, we got responses back from a number of people, we started these conversations with about voluntary annexations, things that they might want to include, um, or preserve or negotiate with us, some of those we did follow through on, we didn't hear back from a lot of people, because most people don't want to be in this, um, then, now we're into this involuntary annexation case, so we, we've been visiting around for quite a long time, there's been lots of-
I was, so I come to the meeting, and you guys pull out the bus company, I was here with my wife, nobody said nothing about this, and I was listening really good, and it wasn't, that was only two months ago, so if this was going on, it was going on behind the scene.
We said, if I could, there was a, there was a hard point, we made it very clear-
We made it very clear in our intention, this is always-
I, I didn't even, I missed it, the land was here with my wife, I mean, listen to the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Did you want to adjust the?
Uh, as far as the MOU, uh, the point is, it, when it's in, if it's voluntary, you can have it, it's a contractual agreement, you don't have, it's called legal privy, right? Now, now that you would be come, uh, annexed into Orland Park, at that time, we're able to contract with you, that's the reason why it's after, so it's the step, the threshold, once you're there, I know it's back control, and everyone hates legalese, okay, I know that, but that's where legal comes down to.
Okay, so a little better.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Justine Lawler.
Um, so I think we did an annexation study back in two thousand and seven, right, and we updated in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, was this, were these properties ones that were identified in two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes.
As part of the annexation?
These are in the comp plan.
This is in the comprehensive, that's what I said, this is in the comprehensive plan as high priority for annexation, right, so we've known, you know, from a village perspective, that this was coming for quite some time.
Right.
Um, and, uh, so I just, I think I heard the answer to my next question, is we recently notified the residents in November, so that, what happened in November was the formal notification, um, but, uh, as Steve mentioned, there were informal, uh, letters that went out as part of that two thousand and twenty-two annexation.
Never.
I don't remember.
No.
I did, yeah.
Uh, you know, so, uh, so maybe things were sent out in two thousand and twenty-two, that, that's, that's fine, uh, but, you know, reminders are always good, uh, but, but here we are, right, so, okay, so we sent something out formally in two thousand and twenty-two, and in two thousand and twenty-five, here we are. Um, obviously, there's some concerns here from the residents and, and business owners. Um, now, you know, I've heard over and over that people kind of called this the area that was forgotten by Orland Park, well, there's a reason to it, it's not officially part of the village Orland Park, all right, so there's never been anything we could do about anything that happens on Wolf Road, or anything that is built there, if trucks are parked in your backyard as a, as a semi-truck facility for, what, three years, uh, with a disgusting-looking black building that floods and smells like mold, right, we couldn't do a thing about that, because we had no control, right, so, you know, if this happens, this is part of this town, a village, one that no longer will be forgotten, you have a beautiful facility where you're at, you know, I see it all the time, but look next door, and what was there, I, I-
Right, cold slice.
Right, so, uh, you know, that's what, really, what we're looking at here, is how do we turn that into something that is presentable for everybody, and that we can manage and maintain, right, that's, that's really what our direction here is, and, you know, I understand the concerns, I, I'm kind of on both sides of this right now, I was like, I think it's a great idea for the village of Orland Park, I think it's good, but I think there's some concerns here as well, you know, that, that we need to make sure we're going to move forward with memorandums and understanding, and we take care of it.
Trustee Healy.
Mr. President, uh, it seems to my recollection, I might be wrong, but it might be about a year and a half ago, we were dealing with the Silver Lakes, people over on Eighty-second Avenue, and we, we did the, we went and, it took a while, but to get the memos of understanding from all people wanting to voluntarily annex, and then we annexed, so could you, did I hear that wrong, that we're supposed to annex and then get the memo?
Because the difference is, that was a voluntary, and it's a, here, this is involuntary, that's the key difference, so it's, it's the work, if they were voluntarily coming in, then it's, we have an agreement, when it's involuntary, there's no agreement yet.
And if I could also, Steve, uh, what we do with developments is they, they enter into an annexation agreement, the ones that are unincorporated, and that has a much more formal process that has to go through if we get voluntary annexation.
Yes, so they have the option, I have it, but they don't, but people do have an annexation agreement, which sets the terms of what they've done, um, larger developments, it includes all kinds of things, like houses there or something, um, but yeah, after the fact, we can come to a memorandum of understanding, you don't have as much negotiating, but at least we can work out some concerns that we are at mutual agreeable terms about, but, um, it's not, it's not, like I say, I'm not going to do, well, you're going to get an annex, if you're going to be involuntary, next year, annex, so we're just, if there's certain concerns that you don't want to memorialize, um, we can, we can talk about this, some things are not able to, some things we are.
All right, just, I'll make up to you.
Yeah.
Just, you got to yourself.
Josh Waller, um, trustee, thanks for your consideration for the residents and the short notice and the short timeline we got with the letter two weeks ago, much more important to us than a legal clock. Um, I just wondered if maybe you, you would speak to the need to annex that residential area on the other side of the tracks, justification I've understood so far has been, we don't want a used car lot on Wolf Road, which makes sense, but on the other side of the tracks, that residential area, the only part I, uh, and we touched on, the need to annex that area was by Hall, was the reference, right? Would you speak a little bit more to, um, why that is a need to be annexed as well, just for understanding?
George, you want to explain, Lawrence won't like to.
Well, let's start with Steve, Steve, can you talk about the, what, what do we need to do to-
For involuntary annexation, you need to be basically wholly surrounded by a municipality or a series of municipalities, or a park reserve, or no exceptions.
No, please, Steve, one more time.
Sixty acres.
One more time, it has to be wholly-
Wholly surrounded, which it is, um, in this case, because of, real, real, real law about railroads, um, we don't count the railroad, less than sixty acres, you cannot, if something's less than six, sixty acres, you can't pick and choose which ones you want to involuntarily annex, you have to do all of it, it's all or nothing. So we can't, it isn't like we are just, like, we, just because we want these properties on Wolf, we, to get those properties, unless they come involuntarily, we have to take everything that's in the less than sixty acres, we can't do parts, so it's, it's all or nothing, am I, is that correct, Mike? So that's just the way that the statute is.
No, Steve, thanks.
Fifty-nine, one, nine.
Sorry, guys, the, um, I've heard a couple of specific items that we would need to work out with, uh, memos of, uh, understanding, storage for billboard, I heard mention that they serve you, that you have horses, so that's certainly allowable use, when you come in this way, because it's an existing legal, it's illegal not, I hate the language, legal nonconforming use, so it's not an issue, Orland Park next day shown up to say, the horse has got to go, that's not the goal here, that's not the intention, and then I've also heard generally as a theme, what's in it for, what's in it for, for the residents, and so I think that we can work that out in terms of the memo of understanding, because the hypothetical situation of John, I apologize, I know you've said your name five times, I have heard, I've heard about it, is if, if things fail tomorrow, you're really stuck, because the county won't let you, won't permit you to rebuild your septic system, and you would benefit if all of your neighbors, if we did, you know, call it for lack of a better word, a neighborhood plan where this is done once, and we work it out with all the neighbors in all these individual memos of understanding, so you have access to the water and to the sewer, because I think in these other annexation areas, we did not change anything, we didn't force everybody to take streetlights and sidewalks and curves, is that correct, George?
That's correct.
The villages have a long history of these types of annexations, where if you don't just go in and like, you know, just all of a sudden, you got to come up to all extent, it's not, that's not the goal, it's not the objective, that's what should we work out with all these memos of understanding, and to the point earlier, thrown around terms, a special service area would simply be an agreement for us, we're going to go do the engineering, we're going to go figure out what's the maximally economic efficient way to enable everybody to eventually tap in when everybody's ready, maybe you want to do this group, where you tap into the water and sewer, maybe it needs to be, we need to get some infrastructure there, and then it's piecemeal, I don't have a plan yet, so we'll have to do the engineering, obviously it'd be better if the neighborhood came in, because that's how other neighborhoods have done this, so I wanted everyone here, we will work out the specific issues with your property in terms of those memos of understanding, that's, I think, understood by everybody on staff and the board. Any other comments or questions from the, from the board here? And then one last thing before we do that, I'd rather everybody here could make sure staff has your most accurate contact information, because we go through a lot to try and make sure we know how to reach out to you by phone, by email, or by US mails, we'd like to make sure that we have all that contact information.
I think, could you just sign in with Jim, Jim, can you raise your hand? Maybe just give me just your contact, his contact, your contact information to Jim, so that we can keep you within the whole.
One more time to look for the board, any other comments or questions on the board? Check the other question.
Yes, we do.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, call a roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence, aye. Trustee Lee Blood, aye. Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
No.
Trustee Gatzinas.
No.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Motion, please.
George, before we move on to the next item, is it clear for you and staff and for the attorney, what has to happen next with the residents in terms of working out the memos of understanding, so that they see some benefits from coming into the village Orland Park?
Absolutely.
And they also have the paperwork, so to speak, to protect them, that we're not going to change the rules of the zone, so everything's got to be torn up in the neighborhoods the next day?
Absolutely, uh, soon as we get, uh, we're going to have planner, uh, Sangita, reaching out to you, uh, and to start that process, uh, so we can work out that.
I think that, I think they're not, they're pretty sure it's in there.
And then, George-
You can reach out to her also.
George, I'd also like to make sure that she and the engineering departments are looking at options to at least de-risk the problem, so that if in that hypothetical situation, some of these systems fail, there's potentially a fast recourse, because we know the official answer from the county group, we know, so that's going to, that's going to lead you guys on a lurch, let's try and figure that out.
We'll give that over to Joel, and, uh, Joel will have his utility guys start doing some preliminary planning, so that we can have an idea for the, for the residents.
Next item.
An ordinance for eminent domain of ninety-four oh one, one hundred and fifty-ninth Street, former BP gas station. Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lee Blood.
I move to take from the table the ordinance for eminent domain of ninety-four oh one, one hundred and fifty-ninth Street, former BP gas station.
There's a second motion, there's a second.
We need to go about that, take it off the table.
All right, there's a motion or a move from the table, is there a second?
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Just to be clear, this is a motion to table?
No.
All right, uh, trustee Lee Blood, aye. Trustee Lawrence, aye. Trustee Lawler. Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Gatzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lee Blood.
I move-
Excuse me, folks, thanks.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing acquisition of property by eminent domain at ninety-four oh one, one hundred and fifty-ninth Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second, George, before we go any farther, there were some things that were brought up, do you mind addressing them? In terms of why we're doing this, and the infrastructure, uh, the infrastructure improvements that are going to happen at one hundred and fifty-ninth and ninety-fourth Avenue?
Yeah.
In transit of the owner, who's maintaining the property, will you talk to that, George?
So the, uh, property, property has been an eyesore, uh, it's been vacant and unused since March of two thousand and twenty, um, and at this point, the only maintenance that has been done to that property is being done by the village, uh, we now leave this place on that property, uh, we've taken them to court multiple times, so what the, based on the previous connection with the village board, uh, the rights of staff to attempt to come to a voluntary, uh, agreement, and, uh, we were close on the price, the, the sticking point was there is a deed on the property, uh, that, um, the property owners are not willing to release, the hope to our attorney was, they're not, we wouldn't release it for a billion dollars, so, um, the deed will prohibit, uh, almost every, uh, will prohibit a lot of business options on that property, so we hope to, um, get the property back online, uh, so that it's not an eyesore, that it's, uh, that it's a auctioning business, uh, the eminent domain route gives us that option, because through successful court or negotiation, because negotiation still can happen, uh, once the board directs eminent domain, uh, we can get the deed restriction lifted as part of that process.
George, in your opinion, this is property other than our maintenance other for years, or should not be compensated for, is that light?
George, I mean, sure does look like it, uh, I mean, it would be, uh, very light if we weren't taking care of it at this point, and as you mentioned, Mayor, uh, we have done traffic, uh, studies at that intersection, engineering is currently working on, uh, a plan, it's a three jurisdiction intersection, it's Illinois Department of IDA, the county, and us, uh, it's the second highest accident-prone intersection in the village, uh, it's going to require some work, and it's going to require us taking some land to put in extra dual left-term lanes, so in addition to lighted property, uh, the fact that we can't, uh, voluntarily get rid of the deed restriction, and because of the, uh, roadway improvements, uh, it's recommended that we proceed with the eminent domain.
Any comments or questions on the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Justine Gatzinas.
I've mentioned this before to my colleagues, and I'll say it here, I feel that eminent domain is adding in of government coming in and taking property that isn't theirs, and I understand the justification, you know, everything you're saying, it's hard to disagree with, but I think the bigger picture is government intervening to take another's property, and in this case, it was quoted as being a part of a larger development, in my mind, I see reaching in, grabbing it, because the government can, and then turning- I see reaching in, grabbing it, because the government can, and then turning around and helping another owner that had wanted that property, buy it from the village. It just, I understand about the blighted, but I have a real problem with eminent domain because it does definitely threaten our property rights. And when somebody takes private property, you know, you think it's for something like a road, you know, a waterway, you know, a school, you know, you can take a little bit of it for intersection. We've done it with other parcels, but I think there's a bigger issue here than just, it's a vacant corner. It's found that way for a while. They don't take care of it. Agreed? A bigger issue of government coming in to take somebody's property. I have a problem with that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Lee Bligh.
In terms of this property in particular, not only is it just, has it just been sitting vacant, but there's been, there's been absolutely no effort to maintain it. To the point, as I understand, George, they won't even pay their fines and the village is maintaining it. So this is, I mean, we can't encourage any property owner in Orland Park to treat the village that way. This is something that's harmful to the residents. It's been found to be a dangerous corner that would, that needs, that, and that a portion of that property would be, as I understand it, that there would be a portion of the property used just to, to correct the dangerous portion of the corner.
Correct, correct.
Okay. We have three jurisdictions involved and this property is just going to sit there and cost Orland Park money year after year. I don't think that, I, I think that eminent domain was made exactly for this reason. That, you know, property owners can't come to Orland Park and just buy property and then make us take care of it for them while they just sit back and ignore it. That's not the way, you know, it's not responsible property ownership. So I, I definitely think that, you know, I think it's best.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Lawler.
George, good question for George. George, can you tell us a little bit about the owner? It's my understanding that he's an absentee owner. He does not live in Orland Park. So he has no daily touch with the property?
That's what our understanding is as well. We've been mostly trying to deal with first thing, the attorney, which is why we've been, why the area looks so, so bad because nobody is here to take care of it. We've leaned the property for all the work that the village does on the molding and the cleanup. So my understanding is the, the state or maybe not.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawrence.
I have a question for George. So a property like that, which is allowed to go into disrepair, from a tax, property tax perspective, is it get a tax break because of that? It's not worth it? So they get a reduction in their assessment? That be true?
Absolutely. I mean, when they, you know, when anybody goes and deals their assessment, it's in very poor condition, they, they would absolutely benefit if they produced their, their property next.
So that property owner perhaps is causing the village to lose taxes that would otherwise have to be made up by other residents and business owners?
Yeah, especially since we're, we're maintaining the property.
And that too. Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, you've said that we are in negotiation with the owner and that we're very close to price and the owner would gladly sell it to us. Except that, that owner will not give up a deed restriction that's on that property?
Yeah, it's either the owner or the parent company. I'm not exactly sure. But in any case, it's been made clear to us that they will not, they will not lift the deed restrictions. There's actually two deed restrictions. One has to do with the inhabited state, basically a gas station, like in that, in that current configuration, and something about a convenience store. And, and just to make clear, when it comes to eminent domain, and Mike can chime in here, it's not like the village goes and says, "Well, now we own it, get out." What ends up happening is it's a very formal judicial process that entails two sets of appraisals, one from us, one from the property owner, and then it goes before a judge. And so compensation is just, it's a just compensation based on appraisal value.
So then in this case, it's very possible that the owner would gladly sell it to us, but the owner may be under obligation
Right.
to maintain those deed restrictions that maybe the owner doesn't really want?
That is possible.
So the owner will be justly compensated and that property can become available for redevelopment. And as far as I know, there is no, we're not going to turn it over to someone just to turn it over to them. There's, there's not an identify, even if there are local landowners that are adjacent to that, that doesn't mean it's necessarily that we're going to be handing it to that entity. It may happen and it very well may not happen.
That's exactly right. I mean, obviously, the village's goal is not to buy this and to hold on to it. The village's goal is to buy it and get it back on its tax rolls with a, with a, a buy with this.
To, to its highest and greatest use.
Yeah, yeah.
And highest and greatest taxes. So the rest of the residents of Orland Park don't have to pay more to cover what they're not paying.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I agree with you. Trustee Katsinas said that the, there is, it's, you know, the eminent domain is a very distasteful option. But I think, to me, the ethics of, of this rest that this is not a, a small business, family business, this is not a residence, this is just a transaction, a business deal. And, you know, they, people have, you know, do the service to the community by not taking care of it. And it's, I think that as far as a business deal, this is the risk they run by leaving it blighted. And I think it would be in the best interest of the village in that. And I hope the village, if anything else, can put it up for sale as soon as possible to a great buyer benefit. They would use the property for something. But it's that, I don't believe it's in the village's best interest to hold onto this for 50 years. So let's, hopefully something will happen afterwards. Thank you.
Any other comments, excuse me?
I have a follow-up question, may I?
If the board will allow it, I don't mind. Go back and introduce yourself.
Corinne Tablis, thank you for clarifying, George. I appreciate that. And I understand if there's delight and if they haven't paid certain things and there's links on the property. My question is, is that sometimes it's a very slippery slope when you go down the eminent domain road. And in certain cases, it's necessary for the enhancement of Orland Park, for the best public use. However, what is happening also next door with the KFC? Why isn't he allowed to open? Because as far as I've heard, that is going also to be eminent domain. Is that right?
We'll, we'll address that item next. So.
Okay, thank you.
Got it. Come next.
So I was impacted by eminent domain and it is a very arduous process. I understand under certain cases, but if this is for the betterment of Orland Park, that's fine. If this is for the betterment for a certain developer, that's not so fine. And that land in back of there may or may not be wanted by a certain developer to enhance their development. So that's the thing you need to be very careful of. Because again, I don't know if any of you have been impacted by eminent domain, but it is, I think you'd be fighting, you'd be telling a different story if you were. Again, if it's a blighted area and he hasn't done his due diligence, then I understand that. But if somebody that owns property adjacent to there, I'm very concerned because what if I'm?
What property do you own?
159th and Ludraine. She's a girl, at least she's a couple of ways.
Got it.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate you sharing your concern. And George, for you and staff and for the attorney, just making sure, in the village's opinion, this is both vacant, it's obsolescent in terms of the facility, and there's blighted. Is that true?
Absolutely.
And it is, it's a perfect definition, one of the ways, yeah.
And we're doing this, in my humble opinion, because we do have to fix that intersection. What happens next, don't know. And in eminent domain, we're not taking anything. We're paying for it according to whatever the judge says, based on two appraisals, theirs and ours. And, you know, anytime they want to reach out to us and negotiate, George is pretty easy to find. Any other comments or questions? There's a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Call roll.
Trustee Lee Bligh, aye. Trustee Lawler, aye. Trustee Lawrence, aye. Trustee Healy, aye. Trustee Katsinas, no. Trustee Malani, aye. Mayor Dodge, aye.
Next item, please.
An ordinance for eminent domain of 9441 159th Street, former KFC restaurant.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawrence.
Motion to remove from table, I move to take from table the ordinance for eminent domain of 9441 159th Street, former KFC restaurant. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Call roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence, aye. Trustee Lee Bligh, aye. Trustee Lawler, aye. Trustee Healy, aye. Trustee Katsinas.
Was going to make a comment, um.
There's just a motion to remove.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. Aye. Sorry.
Trustee Malani, aye. Mayor Dodge, aye.
All right. We'll have, entertain a motion and then we'll have comments from the trustees. Is there a motion? Trustee Lawrence, Lee Bligh.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing acquisition of property by eminent domain at 9441 159th Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the trustees? Katsinas?
Mr. Chairman. I just had a couple of questions for George. Is the owner on the KFC local?
Uh, my understanding is the, kind of. I think they're in Northside somewhere.
Okay, so they're within the state. And are there any deed restrictions on this property?
There is a very, very long term.
Okay, but there's no restrictions on the deed, but there is a lease that would have to be looked at. Is any part of that property going to be taken for the reconstruction or addition at 159th and 94th?
Uh, there could be, there could be a, what do they call that? A slow lane, de-selling. I don't know.
And we don't know that for a fact, right?
I don't know right now, right.
Okay, so there's no deed restriction. The owner's current, it's not on the dangerous corner. And we're not sure if there's going to be any land taken from the KFC.
For de-selling, yeah, we're not.
We don't know that. That's an unknown. Nor do we know whether or not the owner's getting a break on the taxes. It was an assumption and we, we don't know that for a fact, right?
Yeah, we don't. What their, what their individual assessment, nobody will know.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lee Bligh.
George, you were commenting that there's a long term lease. The lease you're referring to is not the, the one for this current person. This is a different lease, right? What lease that?
The gentleman that came in previously, he has a sublease. And my understanding is it's till 2040. And, but the master lease, I believe, is also that long on that property. So whoever had KFC before, subleased it to this gentleman till 2040, might voluntarily buy a property and buy the lease as well. So through this process, again, this just kicks off the process. We can actually negotiate once the eminent domain starts to get rid of that lease.
To, and to clarify, you mean to get rid of the, the main lease?
The main lease.
And then to allow the current sublease holder to renegotiate?
Uh, the current sublease holder will not have a lease at that, at that point.
Okay. And how, and just, how long has this been something that has been on the table? Or has this been discussed with the KFC? How long has, I'm sorry, I need to clarify my question. How, how long has the village been trying to communicate with this owner about the transfer of this property?
Since, I can't remember the exact dates. It would be, this was discussed previously with the village board about attempting to voluntarily, I don't remember the exact date when that started. It's been a while, so.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Malani.
Just also, the person with the current sublease is trying to open a business there, correct?
Yes, a coffee shop. He started work without a permit, so there is work that has occurred there. But there is, obviously, without a permit.
And he, he was signed in for that?
Yes.
Was it, did we actually go court and pay a slash?
No, typically for work without a permit, the first time, I think, we just tap, tap on. Then you get a citation. Is that right, Steve? And then they have to pay the, an increase permit.
And in this particular case, he had a patent permit because the UCU wants, needs a special use permit. So when it would come time for the permit, should that special use, if you would continue with the project, granted, then the fine would have been worked into the work without a permit fee increase.
So he has a come in to require an extra special use permit? Has he come in to apply for a permit?
He did apply for a special use permit, yes.
Okay, what is the status of his permit? This work, obviously, it's, they told him, he can do it. And he's, he can definitely go and proceed with it, let's say, his own residence. Because we made it clear that the village is attempting to acquire this.
He's aware of this.
So, okay. What is the status of his permit application? That's the question I want to answer.
It is being reviewed.
His special use permit application.
Yeah, it, it's constantly under review.
It is in review.
It's constantly under review, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? So, I'm sorry. All right, George, so this potentially makes all the intersection things we need to do at 159th and 94th, 94th more usable, include that intersection, correct?
Yep.
And then it's, how long has it been vacant, the KFC?
Three years.
Three years.
Yeah.
So it's been vacant.
Yeah.
All right, so there's no other comments or questions from the board. George, let's, let's see if they reach out to you. There's a motion and a second. Call roll, please.
Trustee Lee Bligh, aye. Trustee Lawler, aye. Trustee Lawrence, aye. Trustee Healy, no. Trustee Katsinas, no. Trustee Malani, no. Mayor Dodge, aye. Motion passes. Orland Park Place Lot 1 re-subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the planned commission recommended action as presented for case number 2025 slash 0882, also known as Orland Park Place Lot 1 re-subdivision.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Call roll.
Trustee Katsinas, aye. Trustee Malani, aye. Trustee Lawrence, aye. Trustee Lawler, aye. Trustee Lee Bligh, aye. Trustee Healy, aye. Mayor Dodge, aye. 14336 Jefferson multifamily building, special use permit for attached dwellings to 14336 Jefferson.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawrence.
I move to approve the planned commission recommended action regarding case number 2025 dash 0192, also known as the 14336 Jefferson multifamily building. And I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting special use for dwellings attached with modifications 14336 Jefferson multifamily building, dash 14336 Jefferson Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawrence.
I looked at the engineer's drawing, site plan, the landscape plan. I have looked at the engineer's drawing, the site plan, the landscape plan, building elevations, material samples. This looks like a very nice development, very thoughtfully put together. It fits the neighborhood, and I like it.
There you go. Any other comments, questions? Call roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leeblin?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. 14336 Jefferson Multi Family Building Plan of Consolidation, 14336 Jefferson Avenue.
Mr. Chairman? Trustee Malani? Move to approve the plan commission recommended action regarding case number 2025 dash 0945, also known as the 14336 Jefferson Multi Family Building Plan of Consolidation, which is a subset to the original case number 2025 dash 0192, and approve the plan of consolidation prepared by S.H. Campbell dated November 8, 2024, and authorize staff to support the plan.
Second.
There's a motion of a second, any comments or questions? Call roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Leeblin?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Land Development Code Amendment, driveway with re...
Do you have a question? Hey, you think we can answer quick, or do you want to chat with the village manager? Okay, yeah.
Land Development Code Amendment, driveway with requirements.
Clear motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to approve the plan commission recommended action regarding case number 2025 0875, Land Development Code Amendment, driveway with requirements, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Land Development Code of the Village of Orland Park," as amended.
Second.
There's a motion of a second, any comments or questions? Call roll.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leeblin?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Ray? Send it to him, see. The next item?
Recreation and Parks, a resolution of the Village of Orland Park, in support of the Illinois America 250 Commemoration.
Clear motion and second, trustee Leeblin?
I move to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Village of Orland Park, in support of the Illinois America 250 Commemoration, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review."
Second.
All right, Ray, any quick comments on this?
Aye. Now, we're excited that the board would adopt this resolution, we're gonna start planning for the new year to celebrate the commemoration of 250 all hammered for 2026, so we're just excited to be able to have that.
Yep, and thank you for what you and your staff do, Ray. There's a motion of a second, call roll, please.
Trustee Leeblin?
Uh, aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler is set out. Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. RFP number 25 dash 059, tennis slash pickleball and basketball court repairs.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to waive the requirements of the responsible bidder ordinance in competitive bid process for the repair of courts at Discovery and Eagle Ridge Parks, due to the extenuating circumstances as detailed in the memorandum for this matter, and to approve and authorize the execution of professional services agreement between the Village of Orland Park and U.S. Tennis Construction Company for RFP number 25 dash 059, tennis and basketball court repairs in the amount of $78,000 plus 10% contingency of $7,800 for a not-to-exceed contract amount of $85,800 for Discovery Park basketball court repairs and Eagle Ridge tennis slash pickleball court repairs, as outlined in the proposal dated October 14, 2025, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager approve changed orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
There's a motion of a second, any comments or questions? Mr. Chairman? Trustee Malani? Just to clarify, we're moving forward with waiving requirements because U.S. tennis is like the people to go to for this, right?
Uh, because we wanted to see what the proposal...
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
It, it, I mean, may I communicate with, right?
Sure.
Okay. Ray, considering the popularity of pickleball, I kind of find it interesting that nobody else's been on it except the company from Longboard. So, is there, you know, any way we can be proactive, and it really doesn't need the requirements? Is that correct?
If they didn't meet the RVO requirement, that's correct.
Okay. The RVO is the responsible bidder.
Right, right. So they didn't meet that. I mean, is this something that's pristine, that we can't try to do another RFP? Because I, I find it hard to believe that there's just one company with the, with the craze of pickleball. I know you hate hearing that.
Well, this, this is the coating and the striking of courts and repairs, so this company has done this for all our courts. Uh, every time we go out to RFP, we, we tend to get just this one, um, and it is typically U.S. tennis. So we've not had any luck in getting others for, historically, for years now to bid on tennis courts. They'll do an acrylic finish, all the striking, they'll fix all the ponding, repair the cracks. Uh, they'll contact out for asphalt work, so they will engage another company if there's asphalt work that has to take place. Although I think you all the coping. We just haven't had any luck tracking any other, uh, bidders for these, this kind of work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So, Ray, we've had this issue for, for this particular type of work, correct?
That's correct. Except we need to, uh, pickleball, it's a huge court. The courts have a special, the surface that's a pocket.
Got it. All right, there's a motion of a second, call roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leeblin?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Finance, an ordinance providing for the levying, assessment, and collection of taxes for the current fiscal year of the Village of Orland Park, Cook, and Will County, Illinois.
Is there a motion? We're gonna start the discussion, do you want to discuss first? Presentation from, uh, from the bill, from the village staff, next three items are interrelated. Mr. Mayor? Trustee Lawler?
Um, I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Levying, Assessment, and Collection of Taxes for the Current Fiscal Year of the Village of Orland Park, Cook, and Will Counties, Illinois, Will Counties, Illinois, which includes a village levy in the total amount of $13,669,063, and a library levy in the amount of $7,379,985, for a total of $21,49,48."
Second.
There's a motion of a second. George, I believe we, uh, is this presentation for the next three items, correct? Exactly. All right, so, let's go ahead.
So, uh, we're very happy to present, uh, the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. This has been a very long process, as it is every year. I want to thank, uh, the finance staff, all the department directors, uh, their key staff, and, uh, putting together, uh, a very good, uh, plan that guides us, uh, for the next year, and it continues to fulfill our mission, just enhance the quality of life of those who work, live, and visit Orland Park. So, as I mentioned, uh, this, this, the budget starts, it's a six-month process, and, uh, here are some of the more recent dates, and every, the board is aware of them because we have lived through them. Uh, but, uh, we're at the point now where we are, December 1st is the day we actually approve the fiscal year 2026 budget. So, uh, we're very proud to present the budget that is, uh, it's balanced within the parameters of the financial policies, continues our commitment to public safety, and continues our infrastructure investment. As far, as far as the financial policy parameters, the proposed budget, uh, maintains a general fund balance of 41.5%, which is greater than the village's policy of 20%. Obviously, the, the board is aware that, that the village retains fund balance to help manage cash flows throughout the year due to collection of some revenue sources such as property taxes being, uh, consistent throughout the year. Uh, fund balance also helps us weather shortfalls in revenue, inventory prices, it's our rainy day money. As far as our infrastructure investment, the proposed budget continues with the guidance of the 2023 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Uh, this includes, uh, $6 million as part of the road improvement plan program in 2026. So, uh, the main theme of the 26 budget is invest in public safety. When village staff started drafting the 26 budget, Mayor Dodge made it clear that this is the theme for 26, it's public safety. So, there are a number of safety enhancements, a lot of them we talked about in previous meetings. But, uh, the, the main one is more police personnel. We're gonna get more police personnel, uh, immediately, uh, starting in 26. Uh, we're also, as the board is aware, we're gonna be implementing a 12-hour shift schedule beginning February 1st. Uh, this is an overall benefit for, uh, the well-being and stable work environment, uh, for our police officers. We're undertaking a service delivery review, not just in police, but, uh, throughout the entire organization. It's gonna be a deep dive into our organization. We're emphasizing predictive policing with the incorporation of AI and data analytics. Uh, something that the, the, uh, police department is starting to do is assessment centers for promotions. They are for any promotion above sergeant, they are bringing in the Illinois Chief, uh, Chiefs Association to handle those assessments and make recommendations. And, uh, as we did earlier today with the IGA, the tenant department, uh, greater inter-agency cooperation. Uh, as part of the budget, we're going to be incorporating a public information officer. It's a, a very, uh, common position in, uh, a number of departments. It's very, especially more in, uh, in our social media age and, uh, the, uh, instant communication that, uh, our residents, uh, deserve. Uh, we, we saw a number of technology enhancements, one of them is the drones as first responder program. It was pretty cool yesterday at, uh, at the, uh, festival, to see the red and blue lights on the drone flashing, it was pretty cool. As part of our agreement, uh, on the 12-hour shifts, we are, we have increased, uh, traffic stops built into our agreement, and, uh, we're going to be looking to enhance or increase penalties for quality of life violations. Uh, mental health is very important, has been very long time for the police, uh, with their, uh, with their programs that they have. But we're also incorporating Care Solus for, um, as a resource for all residents. And, uh, we've already brought on our, our first of two therapy dogs, and those are big hits. Uh, something else that, uh, we're gonna be doing is enhancing emergency preparedness. Uh, the, uh, currently, our, well, our organization has, uh, ESTA, which is a all-volunteer organization. Uh, we're gonna be transitioning to, uh, emergency management agency, it's gonna be a federal line with national precedent. And then we're, we're going to be, uh, bringing in an emergency management and special event staffing corps there. So this position's gonna be responsible for, uh, implementing all things emergency management agency and helping out with staffing for both large-scale emergencies and special events. So as far as the staffing for OP EMA, uh, we're gonna transition from an all-volunteer to paid, part-time, on-demand. The, currently, uh, the village outsources event security to a third-party vendor. So just, uh, just three concerts, uh, costs approximately $19,000. Uh, with this OP EMA, we are gonna have that, uh, staff internally, and, uh, we will eliminate that outsourcing. And then here is the, uh, structure, uh, we're gonna be asking the, uh, paid EMA members, uh, who'll be paid, uh, like I said, on a part-time basis, uh, to work a minimum of $120 per year. So that averages about 10 hours per month, and between their two, uh, standing meetings and the trainings that, uh, they'll be required, and all of the, uh, special event staffing, uh, as well as, uh, potential emergencies too, where they're gonna assist with. We'll have four levels, uh, of the, uh, EMA staff, we'll have our responder, which is, continues to be a volunteer, doesn't have to meet the, uh, set number of hours. Uh, our technician is gonna be the entry-level position, uh, then we'll have an EMA officer that, once they meet the mandatory training and by recommendation, uh, an EMA technician would be eligible to be promoted to an EMA officer. And we'll have three, uh, commanders, and, uh, we are endeavoring to, uh, staff this up to 60 members. So each of the commanders would be responsible for, uh, 20, uh, EMA members. So the other, um, Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Uh, just, as far as questions go, we wanna, like, I know this is, this is, this is the levy section.
Yeah.
Do you always want questions about the levy, and you want the other questions later? Or should we wait till you come up to presentation and save all the questions?
I think we can flex, I mean, do you prefer to throw a question? I mean, these all, these next three items are all interrelated.
Right, right, I just wanted to make sure I didn't, like, start talking about the wrong thing, or whatever. No, I'll save my questions here, I just wanted to set the precedent for everybody.
No, that's, that's, yeah, do the presentation, finish the presentation, and then we'll leave the questions, as is all three rolls. Good, Roger.
The other main theme is, um, it's, we're gonna be doing, uh, data-driven, fact-based studies, a number of them. The main one is our comprehensive land use plan, uh, the board is already approved, uh, or have they approved it? I don't know, the southern area plans, we did RFPs for them, well, they haven't approved yet. But we completed our RFPs for that, uh, you'll be seeing that here shortly. Once we complete, uh, the comp plan, uh, we're also gonna be looking at our new, uh, capital improvement plan, and that's gonna be tied in with our strategic plan, so that, that's, that's our biggest, uh, uh, project. I mentioned, Ray, the service delivery review, uh, that's gonna be organization-wide. We're also gonna do a user fee study, we're gonna look at, uh, are we, are we charging too much? Are we charging too little on our, our, our various fees? And then, as was mentioned, that the committee, the whole, we're gonna be doing a strategic operating plan, uh, for Centennial Park West. Uh, this is, uh, uh, this is, uh, something that the board has requested, considering, uh, a business plan was never done for that. So this is gonna help us set the future for Centennial Park West. Also gonna do a feasibility study for Performing Arts Center. A athletic field strategic operating plan, so that, make sure that, see how best we can, uh, utilize our athletic fields for our sports organizations. And Easterfield House feasibility study. We're going to move up the road pavement assessment, uh, to start that process sooner. And then we're gonna look to do a pedestrian and bicycle connectivity plan, it's to, we have a, we have a very large network of pedestrian and bicycle paths, not all of them connect, so we wanna see how we can, uh, just complete that entirely. So, um, you know, the village, and I mentioned this when I started out, the village's mission is to enhance the quality of life of those who live and work and visit Orland Park. This proposed budget enhances public safety and village services. So we'll be adding eight new sworn police officers, this is the first major increase in staffing for the department in 20 years. For many years, or, or since I've been here, uh, the police have made it known, uh, that staffing is inadequate, the village... The village has grown, problems have, our costs for service have grown over the course of twenty years. The new police personnel are going to help us uphold the high standards of excellence in public safety that our community expects. As far as public works in the street division, we have three maintenance worker ones. As was mentioned during the budget workshop, we currently outsource concrete repair work. Where you are, instead of outsourcing that, we're going to bring in that in-house with now a three-person concrete crew. The benefit there is not just that we can get to projects much sooner, but also that we're going to have three more plow drivers. And so that's going to help us, you know, stay on our snow operations. As far as recreation and parks, one new maintenance worker is going to be tasked with assisting in our field maintenance. That's something that we hear from, you know, we do a better job on field maintenance, so that's going to help with that. And then we're going to bring in a coordinator for seniors, veterans, and sponsorships. And it's just that, we're going to be looking to enhance our services to seniors. We're going to look to enhance support for veterans. And then we're going to have somebody dedicated in recreation that's going to be able to really work on sponsorship opportunities. It was mentioned earlier that, you know, we're going to try to get more sponsorship within staffing. There's just something has to give, and there's only so many people. For engineering, we're going to really ramp up the engineering grant machine by bringing in another engineer. The workload in engineering is very high. The only thing that's stopping them from getting more grants is bandwidth. And this is going to help with their workload and to seek even more grants. The village, the mayor has made it clear that we are to focus on data-driven, fact-based decisions. And so this new strategic performance analyst in the village manager's office is going to be tasked with that. We're going to be using data-driven decision-making, especially as it relates to our strategic plan. Another emphasis has been, or is, outreach to our community. And we do an incredible job, but there is capacity and a bandwidth issue there. So we're going to be bringing on another content, or a content creator, writer. The entire village website is going to be remade, redone, and this person is going to be heavily involved with that. And then in development services, we're going to be bringing in a development project advocate. It's a position that is meant to be a single stop for developers and for larger projects. They will be their, just like the title says, their advocate, that they will walk them through from beginning to end. From beginning to the certificate of occupancy, they'll be their single source of information.
So with respect to the property tax levy, I have two slides here, hopefully put it into perspective for us here. First slide here starts off with the EAB. It just shows how over the last, we're using three point seventy-five percent to, a projection of EAB growth for the next year. And that's based on the average over the last ten years. It's gone up and down a lot, but over the last ten years, it's overall has increased three point seven five percent. So we're hoping to capture that growth with new developments throughout the village. I also have here the inflation rates, how they've been going up for our region near all the park. And then below are different levy items that we levy for when we submit the levy, the property tax levy to the county. So the bottom here is number four, and then the next slide here is, it's busy, there's a lot, there's ten years here. But if you kind of get into it and understand it, it's really showing that, it's showing a continued increase in police pension expenses on behalf of the village. And it's also the debt services payments each year have run up with our debt. And then also we're contributing more to recreation and parks. And with that, since we levy on a dollar amount, all those other expenses going up reduces what we have operationally for our salaries. So that's the other items up there that we levy for. FICA, IMRF, and corporate are the other ones. So the corporate is pretty much the leftovers of what the property tax, what the property tax is covering for expenses operationally. So as you can see, it's already, with our salaries increasing each year, it's taking away from the corporate line there. So I hope that makes sense. And then, yeah, just, this is the last ten-year history of our property tax levy. So it's been pretty flat for a long time, and then in 2020, it dropped and then went up the fluctuating line. So I just wanted to bring this up.
So the property tax that's being proposed is not, is less than the peak from 2022?
And then during the budget workshop, I had this same slide up there, and those were preliminary figures. So I just thought I'd present this one, showing, now that the 2025 bond series has been issued, the sales completed, I have the actual figures now, so I just thought I'd represent this with true numbers now.
So we're happy to announce that there are no new taxes as part of this budget. Last new taxes that were approved were in 2023 with the adoption of the natural gas tax, with the electricity tax, and the home roll sales tax. Now, that number right there is for the entirety of the home roll sales tax, not just the increase that we put into place. So much of the new tax revenue from 2023 is used for previously approved debt. But the proposed balanced budget does go through a series of cost-saving measures. While ensuring or enhancing public safety, village services, investing in infrastructure, and making, like I said, a fund balance of forty-one point five percent, far above our policy of twenty percent. So here are some of the cost-cutting measures that have been done. In, so in 2025 alone, we mentioned this during the committee, the whole, village backed one point eight three million for Centennial Park West concert venues. So at this rate, over twenty years, not back to inflation, that cost would be thirty-six point sixteen million. The proposed fiscal year 2026 budget significantly reduces concert expenses. The 2026 budget also includes, as I mentioned earlier, our strategic operating plan. As at the board's direction, the village board discussed the lack of a business plan as part of the original development of Centennial Park. So our operating plan is meant to set the future for that facility. As was mentioned, we can't tear it down. We already spent the money, so now we have to figure out how to run it. Some other cost-saving measures. In September, the village board approved joining the intergovernmental personal benefit cooperative. This is something that was proposed a few years ago, but this year, the board acted on it. Over, immediately, there's a half a million dollars in savings, and over the course of five years, the village will save seven point three million dollars. Just recently, we approved the renewal for liability insurance through our new broker MMA, and that, those costs were reduced, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And then in July, based on the board's direction, the village saves eight hundred thousand dollars by not providing utility real locations, part of the one hundred fifty-third and Ravinia Avenue Roundabout project. The village is also actively renegotiating a previously approved debt commitment. And as we had mentioned earlier, the previous administration of the village on the glide cast to, you know, two hundred and seventy-one million in total debt. There are efforts underway on a number of venues where we will never get to that point. So those are some of the cost-saving measures that are included in this balanced budget that emphasizes public safety, that maintains infrastructure, and is within our financial policies. So happy to ask any questions.
Before we jump in and take questions from the trustees, we thought we'd do all this presentation together because the next three items are all interrelated. So trustee Lonnie, to your point, let's just get all the questions out the table for both the tax and the budget, because it's related.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, so first of all, in regards to the levy, you know, if, you know, people are looking at this, they go, "Oh, their taxes are going to go up." If you look at our tax rate, it's relatively staying the same. The, the way this works, if the EAB stays the same on people's households, and if the tax multiplier, the state multiplier goes up three and a, like, three and a half, three and three-quarter percent, right? They're unaffected, right? Because that absorbs all the growth.
Right.
And there should be a minimal, if any, you know, increase in their village of Portland Park, part of the taxes, which is about, I think mine was like sixty percent. Right. So very, very little change there. So we shouldn't see, you know, inflation of our tax bills because of Portland Park. Right, right. So that, I think, we're holding true to keeping our weight this second. You know, in regards to the staffing, the salary portion of this, right? The, you know, I know, I understand the need for the engineering position, that's obvious. We have a lot of stuff going on, and we've got to create the fix. Help us, right? And I also understand the foyer clerk for the PD, if you look at the number of foyer plus you get for police reports, body cam, foyer double pack, that all makes sense, right? I still, and to this day, do not agree that we need the strategic performance analyst position. I made that clear. But what I, I guess if you could dive into a little bit more, this is my first real question. Can you explain the development project advocate in a little more detail and the content of the positions? Because those are, we touched on it here, but get a little more details of what the position should be.
So we're emphasizing proactive measures. The way we're going to be able to do better customer service is by being proactive instead of reactive. So what we want to do with the development project advocate, there's actually two things that are going to be coming out of this position. One is we are going to set something. We ran out, we didn't bear a flexible bill on this one. So, is it TV input?
Some of the monitors are offline.
Okay, yeah, there you go. So we're going to be doing two things. Any buildouts, any buildouts are, you know, you have a suite or a unit. Any buildout, we're going to establish a once-a-week drop-in hours. So that if anybody's going to come in, you're going to have all of the respective departments, development services, industry planners, building, we're going to have, we're going to invite fire, we're going to even have legal there. Anybody that's doing a buildout project, and this development project advocate is going to coordinate that. They're going to come in, and then we're going to try and hammer out as much as possible to show up with their plans so that we can avoid a lot of back-and-forth communication between them. So it's a proactive measure for development. The other element that they're going to do is anything that is going to be of a bigger scale. And we're going to start off with a pre-meeting, like a pre-plan meeting. And from that point on, all the way to certificate of occupancy, the development project advocate is going to be their single source of information. They're going to be able to pick up the phone, the phone, and talk to them through planning, through building, any business licensing. They're going to be their advocate so that we can actually get them online as soon as possible. Again, we want to avoid handoffs. And handoffs are still going to happen, but there's going to be a single point of contact for it. It's to make this process as smooth as possible.
If I may, trustee Lonnie, we're going through this right now. We have a restaurant owner who is better at running a restaurant than he is working through the process of getting approval to do some expansions. And so staff is charged with tuning up and changing processes as needed. But the addition of staff hopefully obviates all these problems in the future. Where a small owner comes in who's not used to all this, we get them through the process pretty quickly. So this is an attempt to drive up the quality and cut the cycle time.
And this will be somebody sitting in development service, correct?
Yes, and more likely it will be somebody that will, it'll be an advancement from a planner. It's got to be somebody that understands our processes from the takeover.
So does he, content writer?
Content writer. So our website, I believe is a great website. There's no bias for people who understand documents. For people who understand documents. So from my perspective, everything there makes sense, right? But when I put, when I put somebody else's perspective in place, it's not set up necessarily for the ease of your average resident, right? So what we are going to do is we're going to recreate the website with simplicity. And what's going to be in mind is for the ease of residents. So when you think of, like, when I think of a building firm, I'm going to go to department, building, then firm, right? I just have to know that. Most people aren't going to know that entire process. So we're looking to really enhance our engagement with our customers through our website. So all tax has to be revisited. All of our content has to be revisited. And something else that we're doing right now is we're really putting a lot of information on our social media. We're doing our newsletters, and we want to even ramp it up even more. That's the, this is a brighter position.
So the website, do you have our RFP?
Well, what happens, just like with anything that we do software-wise, you know this.
Right.
All they're doing is they're setting a framework for us.
We still have to, we still got to do all the action. We got to do all the real work. They're helping this guy through the process, and they're doing the actual infrastructure, but we still have to go through all the work. So between our current staff and the contractor, there's a free time to work on it?
Not at all. I mean, we can look at Vince now, and you'll go bang under his eyes.
Your question is severe, isn't it?
They are, they, our communication staff are incredible, but we are, we can't take on an entire website successfully. We take on an entire website developing. Trustee Lonnie, you're going to remember the website before this one? Right? It looked like it came out when the internet was affected. And the problem with that one was there was nobody dedicated to be able to work on content.
Okay. So then the next question would be the eight new police officers. You know, I know we're going to add the full-time PIO. That's, that's, that's also, is that a sworn position?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to add, that's a sworn position. The lieutenant was in place for the third shift, or for the two, I mean, two-
For the twelve-hour shifts.
Twelve-hour shifts, right, yeah. The sergeant is a training sergeant, correct?
Yeah, so exactly. One sergeant, and any of those is a training, and so that-
And the five officers aren't necessarily in the coverage form on our shifts, but we would like to expand coverage in case people call up, and so on, and the increased call line.
Correct.
Okay, so that makes sense to me. But I thought I saw something in there as well about, there was budget for striping and equipment. and equipment, new squads, correct, forty two thousand dollars. Are we also acquiring seven new vehicles or are these ones we bought in twenty twenty five that haven't been striped yet?
We are getting new vehicles.
We are, are they replacements or in addition?
No, because we have, we have more staffing.
Right.
So we got to, we got to fill down some vehicles.
So for the five officers and then?
Yeah.
Okay, so there were two for Canine, or two of whom for the?
So, yeah, with the, with the therapy docs, they do get cages, but I don't think they're as robust as the, you know, for our, our other dog.
Okay, got you, okay. So, so we will be getting seven new vehicles and accounting the five officers.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, a couple more for you here. The capital improvements in the, in the budget, there's a long list of the things that we have planned twenty twenty five, twenty twenty, what we did in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, you know, there were some in there in red. You know, I think Chris, I'm going to look to you, those are, the ones that are in red that go off to like twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight and so on, those are kind of, maybe we're talked about them, we want them on the radar, but we haven't put a plan together and we haven't moved forward with those projections, right?
Correct, as we go through this budget process, we do five years at a time, right? We are ultimately just approving twenty twenty six.
Right, so it's quite possible that those things listed there weren't part of the original five year plan because, well, we need another five year plan.
Yeah, the five year plan ends in twenty seven.
Yeah, so, so, so some of those things should be blue sky and future looking to do.
Correct.
Last thing everybody, and I'll let you guys go. I can't prepare. So the, the emergency services, so I'm obviously in support of the emergency services turning into an emergency management agency, because I think that gives us the opportunity to kind of leverage those people to do the special event staffing as well, right? And what I'm saying, we're going to use the money that was earmarked for the special event staffing to make sure that we can also staff that as well, right? So this isn't new money, you put it in the budget, the budget was already there, right?
Yeah, so a portion of, a portion of that, and obviously this is going to be a transition year, there's going to be a lot of, we're just going to add another study onto this whole thing, but we're going to, we're going to review the, you know, all of that. So the money that was used for outsourcing, a portion of that is going to be used for the new E M O.
Right, and yeah, I think too with all the changes that the grounds have been trying to put in the past, and we're trying to, you know, put in process and procedures, training, and build up our staff over, over this year, you know, next year we were trying to hit the ground running as well, so kind of bringing these two things together, I think it's going to help us keep the police officers on the street, you know, get them out there, doing right out of what they should be doing. We'll be able to increase our responses to emergencies, have more staff weighted for work events, because I think one of the things you look at it as is like, okay, we're not utilizing it often. Well, we weren't utilizing it often because we didn't have enough people, because the same for people would show up all the time, right? Now, if we had a bigger group of people, we can attend more, more, more events, right? So I think that's going to be good. And, you know, I think if we have a bunch of trained individuals, we'll be able to provide a level of service with this as the better vendors we've had in the past. So, you know, thank you for adding that in there. I mean, I think we had some pretty good discussions over the past few weeks on this and it shaped up rather quickly, so. Those are all the points I wanted to hit, I think, now, unless something else comes up on the license. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I've got a couple of comments here. And I talked about a lot of things with, with Chris earlier today. The, well, first is the interest, investment income. Then we, the budget last year was five hundred thousand, which was ridiculously low, but that's, it gives you a big cushion to come back at. This year we've increased it by up to five million two, seven, three. I mean, that's a, it's a heck of a, it's a heck of a thing. And I'm, I'm trying to justify that by saying, well, we've got, the last October report had about over sixty million in cash and investments. Now we have, using round numbers, forty million for those bonds, that's a hundred, over a hundred million. And five percent, that seems like really rich. And for, in, in many things you do, you're very conservative. This, it's like, to me, we might be a little bit over our skis on, on this, but maybe to the point of two million, now is it fine? I mean, everybody's had their comfort zone, but that's, I think five million is a little bit too much on there, especially if we give some lower interest rates. So that would be, that would be good for one thing, but, but anyway, I think that investment income is a little high, but it's, it's high by, by a couple million. The, the next thing was the group insurance, where I compared the, the last year's budget, the final budget, or the revised budget to the group insurance, and it looks like we're up about a million four, I, I don't have the numbers, but it looks like we're up about a million for group insurance. And what we discussed, well, there's twenty new people on the payroll and they cost thirty three thousand apiece for group insurance, that's six hundred and sixty thousand in health insurance. I mean, that's half of that increase. I'm not sure what the other half is, but, I mean, it, it emphasizes as we add people, it's a huge cost. I mean, the pension provisions, we always push the pensions down the road so they're not even all factored in here. So it's, hiring people is an expensive proposition. I'll get, I'll get into that, but when it comes to the group insurance, so we hired, we're probably a six hundred thousand over that projected state of assessment that I made. Shouldn't the insurance be going down because we're supposed to be saving a million dollars on that, that health insurance? But we're not confident in that health insurance thing, or, I mean, I thought it was a sure thing when, when those people were in here giving us those projections. I, I, so I mean, I, I just see this group insurance thing, I wish we could point to and say, well, we lowered our fee. No, it looks like we haven't lowered them anything, we're increasing them tremendously. And now you're thirty three thousand per person, as you pointed out, is, is a worst case scenario. It's probably going to be less than that, so, I mean, again, here you have worst case scenario, best case scenario with, with the interest rate, so it's, it's a little conflicting to me.
Trustee, so there is an answer to that health insurance?
I just wanted to say, yeah, where you may have found a flaw in the conservative revenues, yes, we are also trying to be conservative on the expense side too. So with the new quotes that we received for the I B C, that will be reflected within the insurance fund. So the insurance fund will represent that, that payment for the health insurance, part of it. And then, so anything that we are budgeting group insurance in the general fund or within recreation or the water fund, all the operational funds, we are just merely just, I guess, not a little bit of a over exaggeration of any vacancy positions. So we take into account actual costs to the village for the current employees, and so not only do we maintain new employees, new decisions we're adding, it's also the other vacancies we have to.
It's just, I worry that that million dollars, I hope, is still real. So when you guys don't put it in there, I mean, put it in, I think, and it's all well and good, but it, when it's added to the meat of the numbers, I, I just worry that it's had a, a shirt then.
So the, the, the health insurance still went up, it just didn't go up as high as it would be if we stayed with the.
Right, the point, right.
So we, we have the, the, the savings there.
You factor, you factor it in.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the, you know, Mike mentioned about the public improvements, and some of these things I don't agree with, but so I do, and it's, it's just a long list of things that, but in moving to this, it's just, I just have a problem with some of those expensive purchases. And then a couple of other comments is the library levy, I just can't still, I wish they could find a way to lower their levy, I know they get, we hit real estate taxes, but still, cut spending, nobody ever talks about that, the library. The, the other thing is that we cut, we cut the thing for two years in a row, the levy, is that right? For two years in a row, we cut the levy. And this is, this is the third year, we're going for the three P, didn't make it, okay? We'd like to see it as a, as a conservative, we'd like to see those taxes put back in the hands of people, of the young adults trying to buy a home and all that, and the old adults trying to keep their home. The, we have a hundred million dollars in our bank account today. I mean, we, so let me see, wait, we cut the levy for two years in a row, we end up with a hundred million dollars in our bank account. I think that's pretty good. I mean, you know, so it can cut the levy and still hit this in. So I just want to make that point. And then the other thing about just hiring is just way to me, a lot, I mean, I, I, police, yeah, we need more and more police, we need, and some of the people in development and all that, the maintenance workers, I have that drove office, can be easily be subcontracted out, and the health insurance and the pensions just keep rising and rising as everybody else in our life, so feel bad about that, but I would make a, a, a call and appeal to the rest of the board to cut back on the payroll by a half. And by then, I mean, maybe do it over two or three years is the best thing to maybe incorporate people's jobs and things over time, but to, I just think twenty, it's just such a huge increase of six million in the payroll overall, and it's just way too, just too much of a, of a thing to, to fire them. So, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lon? So obviously, you know, it's my first budget cycle, so a lot to learn. But to follow, you know, the couple of things that I'm going to make a point to trustee Healy's remarks here regarding the levy, you'll see a clear downtrend twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, sharp. But I think it should be mentioned, Bill, that, you know, you guys cut the levy, but at the same time, you instituted a new tax in the people, which was, you know, you got rid of the, the stickers for the cars. And to me, that was a little bit of a, kind of a bait and switch. You got rid of, you lowered the taxes going into, you know, election years, you got rid of the, the, you know, car stickers, but then at the same time, we increased utility taxes, which affect homeowners. So you're making this point about, you know, homeowners lowering taxes and everything, but yet history shows that you didn't do that, okay? Now, when I ran for election, part of the reason why I jumped into the race, and I'm going to say it again, I'm going to say it again for, you know, probably the first year that I'm in this position, but I felt that we had a decrease in services. And I also felt that we had invested some funds in the wrong places. But some of the services that I want to recap that we've touched base on and we're addressing in this, yes, we are hiring a lot of people, and it is a big, you know, expense and an increase. And we are going to hold staff accountable to see results. We want to see results at the end of the year. And if we don't see results, obviously, then maybe we have to look at some other things, such as management, or, you know, some of the things we're not doing right. And that's what we are spending some of these monies on, you know, you know, doing assessments and other things. But, you know, out of the property tax levy, yes, we're going to jump from thirteen one to thirteen six seven, four hundred ninety four thousand, but out of that, we're going to get a lot of new employees that are going to increase services. You know, I've been on the other end of the development services, and it can be a little cumbersome. When you're someone who comes in to do a project in Orland Park and you're not used to going through the permitting process, it can be a long process. You don't know who you're talking to, sometimes we've seen a lot of turnover. You know, and I know you're a firm believer in time is money, you know, so when I'm trying to do a development project and I'm held up for months trying to get an answer, that affects me opening a business sooner, and that's a direct cost, and that's a barrier to people wanting to come here. Secondly, you know, I've seen a decrease, we heard from, you know, numerous sports teams and other things, that some of our fields needed some better, some, some better improvements, you know, better maintenance. So we're hiring some of these people to take care of that, you know, but we also remember, we put in two new amenities. Centennial Park West, which requires more people to run and maintain that, which is why we need more people in maintenance. We also hired, you know, we also built a, a police training facility, which we need people to maintain that. We put in Schussler Field, which is not just a grass field, it's, it's got to be maintained. We're spending money and we need to maintain these things. We spent a lot of money on the capital budget over the last couple of years. So now we need people to maintain them, and that's what we're doing. We're, you know, it is a big expense, we are going to look for, you know, some results. And, but at the end of the day, we're getting a lot for a very little increase in the overall levy of our taxes. We're going to have better policing, we're going to have a better website, and I'm going to add one more thing to the website. We've had a couple since I've been on this village board, a couple of times where we've had some issues with roads, you know, and certain streets and neighborhoods or parks, you know, Old Orland, whether Evergreen, Few Park, and we had people come in here and they say, we didn't know about this, we didn't get informed. Well, clearly there's a breakdown in communication. So yes, some of the people that we are going to hire are going to address these needs. Also, we're looking at the website, you know, how do we make it easier for people to read and find information about what's going on in the village? So that is our commitment, I'm for the budget, I'm committed to it, I want to increase services. Yes, it's coming at a cost, but again, we're going to look for results. If it's, results aren't there, then we'll reassess a year from now.
Trustee Healy?
Jen, I think, I like your report remark, but the one thing about, you keep your heart burning, is first of all, I wasn't running for election. The, the, but I did vote for that because it seemed like the right thing to do at the time. So if you're so far against the utility taxes, why don't you make an offer, take them back? I mean, if you're to keep coming back with, repeal that utility taxes, I mean, that's fine, and you're saying we're only increasing the, the, our tax by a little bit while we're getting a lot more services, hey, there's a lot of debt out there, we just borrowed forty million and, you know, to get that cash out, it didn't just happen by, just look at our debt levels are rising. It's, the debt is going up, that, the, so you've got to consider that as far as, as far as small tax increases, getting much more services, much more debt to help fund those services.
Mr. Mayor?
My final one, going to respond to that.
All right, well, yeah, let, let's give the other.
I'll, you know, I'll just, I, I understand what you're saying, Bill, but at the end of the day, we made a lot of capital improvements. I didn't make them in the previous administration, you did. So yes, we, and utility taxes there because we have to use our revenue source to pay for things like Centennial Park West, the police training facility, and some of these things in debt. So it is not me who raised these, who built these things. So like I said, I understand what you're saying, we do have a lot of people coming out, but these are important things, we need to increase services to maintain our investments here in Orland Park. I'll leave it there.
All right, any other comments?
Very quickly, I know everyone's kind of falling asleep here, so make it quick. We certainly would be in favor of eliminating those taxes, the utility and grocery tax, if anybody's on board, we have to put that on the agenda, didn't like it in the first place, so I'd be happy to try to take it away. My concern is, I've been highlighting that, you know, a couple of times, and with his forty year accounting experience, went through a lot. My question is though, George, is how many people have been hired or will be hired in this budget since you returned back to the village?
New people?
Total people, including what's in this budget. Roughly, I'm not going to hold you to the exact amount, would you say twenty, thirty?
I'll get you that answer, I don't.
Okay, I think it's probably, my count is close to off, it's close to thirty. And if you look at our budget, what percentage of it as a whole is wages and benefits? Chris, there's a percentage, how much?
I would suspect in the general fund, it's probably eighty percent.
Eighty percent. So these people we're adding, I mean, these capital improvements, we can argue what's right, what's wrong, whatever, but people, it's continuous, it's three percent a year. It isn't just their wages, they're entitled to benefits. And what percentage of their wages translates into the benefits? How much, if you had an employee of fifty thousand, how much does the benefits cost to taxpayer Orland Park?
I think what's our general rule of thumb is thirty three percent?
Thirty, right, thirty percent. So you look at the wages, then you look at the thirty percent, then you look at the three percent raise, then you look at the thirty. We did the math, that escalates really quickly. Like what tax are you going to do to offset that eighty some percent of your budget? I mean, we can argue all day long about the parks. I mean, we can argue all day long about the parks and everything else, people are the expense, the huge expense. Orland Park is over the growth curve. Can our services improve? Yes, we can always improve, but at what cost? There's a fine line, right? We spent millions of dollars on Tyler system to, to improve efficiencies and also affect manpower in a positive way for us, the taxpayers. Okay, what happened to those promises? I hope it's not like, you know, mixed in, like, the whole insurance million-dollar thing now. But the Tyler thing that we did, you know, I, I think I raised the concern that we didn't want any employees to lose their jobs, okay? Because the Tyler system is taking time away from the tedious duties they were doing. So here, we can talk about the capital and everything, there's thirty people, eighty percent of the budget, the, the, the three percent increase a year, I mean, that math quickly escalates. That's what's scary to me. It's not to say, do we need some new people? Of course, do we need thirty? Orland Park's on the other side of growth now. How much percentage are we built out? Yes, there's always new, the people coming into the village and new stores and that, but the big growth, the percentage increase in people, you would think this was in nineteen-eighty-eight in Orland Park, to me, or nineteen-ninety. So I think it's bloated, I don't think we have a, you know, revenue problem in this, we have a spending problem, and it's what caused it all. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy, please.
Just, uh, and I, I'm sorry, I'll be quick. George, um, is, um, does it cost more to lose people and retrain them than to hire people and have them trained properly, work with sufficient coworkers so that every, everybody can get their job done, in case somebody has to miss work and they're not working constantly stressed and under, um, under, and with, you know, without enough manpower?
Absolutely, there's a number of costs. First cost is, it takes roughly six months to ramp somebody up to where they can actually be, you know, a performer, right? And then the other cost is, how does that impact our customers? Like, we saw what happened with the, um, last, last year with the, um, the roof and all of the stuff, we weren't, we were not prepared for that influx of folks who are on, following the handles. So, um, you can imagine frustration from our customer standpoint, right? So the, when we have a revolving door and a high turnover rate, because, um, honestly, this was a, this was a training run. They got great experience, two years, and then they went somewhere and they got a, a better job. It could have just been, uh, same pay, but actually having regular options, because our, our folks now are, they, they're at, they're at peak capacity. So we want to maintain high standards than, um, we're a service provider, right? And that's what, that's why eighty percent of our general bond is salary, because we provide services. We don't, we don't have a budget that includes raw materials, because we don't produce anything. That's why most of ours is, is that. So to maintain that high standard of service delivery, uh, this is what we do.
And in the course of the year, just one more question, in the course of the year, if we see that any of the positions that, um, that were talking about today, that we're creating today, we see that something doesn't work out, it could be improved, or that it's not necessary, will we that just eliminate it?
Absolutely, and the, the, the whole key to our success is kind of flexibility and, and responding to market demands. Um, and so, um, this is gonna make me perpetually reevaluate, not just this year we're going for.
Okay, thank you.
Jesse Lawrence?
Um, regarding the budget, I want to thank Chris, I want to thank George, um, also Teresa helped Chris at times, and Celestine also, um, as well as I talked to a few different department heads about various items. There were more than four thousand line items. Um, obviously, I was looking for the big items, for the individual items, and I'm looking at the rollups and understanding the rollups from a big-picture perspective. And while this is my first year of looking at financial and, and budgets in, in this way versus, you know, municipality versus, um, a business, which I'm more familiar with, I've learned a lot and I've come to understand these line items. I've come to understand why the, the staff, the, the department directors are saying they need this, they need this, that they've explained to me the shortcomings that in recent years they had faced. Um, I understand the capital budget plan that had been done, you know, in prior years for future years, I understand it overall. And for the most part, I'm comfortable with it. Like everyone, there's a little bit of this or that that I, I might do differently, but overall, I'm comfortable with it. And, um, I'm also comfortable that going into potential difficult economic times, very possible, hopefully, we won't see it, but that we'll have a comfortable cushion for making payments should the economy take a bad turn and revenues from, or businesses go down, uh, that payroll taxes go down because perhaps people are losing their jobs, either in the near term or as AI becomes more prevalent. So I want to thank you for helping me understand, and I know I asked you over and over some of these same questions, and say, "Tell me again, why is this?" I appreciate what you've done, and I appreciate for the individual department heads who, um, I asked a question or two, to say, "Hey, why is this?" They were very helpful for me in understanding.
Any final comments from the board before I have some comments? And then I'll make my comments about both the levy and then the budget generally. So levy first, um, could you put that graph back up? The levy overtime. It, um, many of you might not know this, but I have a patent in time series analytics. I'm pretty sure I can detect the reason why those tax rates dipped in twenty, which would be the twenty-one budget right around the election, and then the twenty-four, right before the election, twenty-five. And I think that we are still below the peak, which is a good thing. And to build on trustee Malani's comments, we, uh, the town's value has grown, and we have to service this town, which is bigger. So the increase in the actual dollars of the levy simply reflect a financial need to service, uh, that growth. Um, a couple of other comments that were made, uh, one could lead a person to think that we're using debt for operating expenses. That is technically and emphatically not true. Um, people are the expense, as in any service delivery, and, uh, that's the part of the broad philosophical issue here when you adopt the levy, which is part of the budget. What do the people of Orland Park want from their local government, and how much are they willing to pay for it? So this is about tuning up our value proposition and our service delivery to our residents, all things considered, which has been baked into this budget. I personally don't accept that Orleans on the other side of growth, I think our growth changes, given that we're relatively mature to meeting, we still have two thousand acres that are, that are yet to go, and I am more than happy. Uh, I think this board should be as well to entertain these serious and written ideas on budget efficiencies, just broadly. But from a philosophical perspective, there's four big things, two major risks, and then the twenty-sixth push, which is gonna impact staff. So the four big things in my mind are pretty straightforward. This is a year of substantially investing in public safety. You see that with what we're doing in the police department, and you see the reconfiguration and new business model for emergency management as well. I think we are addressing known service issues. So are we hiring people? Yes. Per the professionals who work every day in the village, they need additional help, and we're gonna hold them to account for it. Uh, third thing under the four big things would be, we are going to deeply assess all of our operating efficiencies and opportunities to either drive up, uh, value and drive down co- time and cost. And then we're gonna build the plan for Orland Park going forward, for Orland Park's future. So George mentioned in this budget, the service delivery reviews, the comprehensive plan, the sub-area plans can address longstanding issues. The capital improvement plan needs to be redone and recast to avoid getting to, uh, the much debt that was originally projected. We're gonna do some financial simulations, and we're gonna do these things so we can thoughtfully plan, uh, the village going forward. All of that rolls into a strategic plan, and it answers the question, or we will answer the question for the people of Orland Park, how do we want to finish Orland Park and maintain this as the go-to place in the Southwest suburbs? So there's still two thousand acres out there that we're gonna have to deal with, because I think they're largely annexed or can't be annexed very quickly. So we've got a lot of work to do. That leads me to the two big risks, and I've had these conversations at length with staff, George in particular. I see two risks to Orland Park's financials and our town generally. One, we don't know if and when a recession might hit and how severe it may or may not be. I would add to that, risks around AI. I think we could see massive disruption in the employment markets, and things could be great, or things could be awful, but I sure do see a really challenging period ahead as the US economy and citizens in Orland Parkers, we, we adapt to those two things. So then what's the push for twenty-twenty-six? And I've had this conversation a number of times with George and Chris, and as soon as we, the new year breaks, we're about the end of the Christmas season and all that, um, we're gonna simulate different scenarios. And we're gonna bring it back to the board to say, if we have a recession, here's the kind of things we might see in our sales tax, or be a, uh, assessed valuation, and let's talk about the financial risk, and then let's have a, a loose plan for how we would deal with a, a worst to a medium worst case. We're gonna let the assessments and the planning happen so that by mid-year, we'll be in a much better place. We're gonna open up the flow of ideas from our residents on multiple channels of communication, not the least of which would be our advisory boards. We're gonna get more perspective on what they want us to focus on, they being the people of Orland Park. We are going to push, George knows this, and Jim knows this, and this goes with some of these hires. The demand, George, is higher quality service delivery, faster, that costs less. Though we're giving you the impossible challenge here, George, we're gonna hold you to it. Because when we get through these assessments, you and your senior staff, while you're one down, to use the corporate phrase, you're gonna have all the data and insights and input you need, and this board's gonna hold you to those three dimensions. Higher quality service delivery, that's faster, and we're gonna, it's gonna cost us less. That may be AI investment, they may be process reengineering, however we get there, we are going to get there. And then all of that's gonna go into building the future plans, primarily to show up in a budget document for twenty-twenty-seven. So that's the, George, that's the challenge, that's the goal. So I just want to make sure you and staff hear it loud and clear about what the board is looking for going forward. We are making a substantive investment. There's always puts and takes with budgets, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen, but we're holding you and your team accountable for delivery on those, those promises. So with that, there's a motion and a second to adopt the tax ordinance, and then we'll go on to the other issues. Call a roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee, please.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Gage?
Aye.
Motion passes. An ordinance establishing certain annual, daily, or hourly pay rates and pay ranges and the salary administration schedule for the Village of Orland Park nonrepresented employees for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Mr. Mayor?
Jesse Lee, please.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing certain annual or hourly pay rates and pay ranges and the salary administration schedule for the Village of Orland Park nonrepresented employees for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
There's a motion, a second, any comments or questions about this?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I heard trustee Malani first. All right, trustee Lawrence?
Um, I don't know if it matters, but the motion, um, that was just read, it was read right from what was printed, however, it does not include the word daily. So serving annual, daily, or hourly pay rates, I don't know if that is an important issue, just pointing it out.
According to attorneys, that's not the issue.
They, they know it's sufficient, so you can just incorporate that.
Thank you.
Incorporate that into the approved, or, or?
Trustee Malani?
Uh, thank you. Uh, just really quick, I mean, I, you heard my comments on most of the positions. Um, I brought this up in the past, when we lumped all of these together into one fell swoop, it doesn't give us an opportunity to say, "Yes, I like this," and "No, I don't like this." It's, I gotta look for all of this or not, and we have to find a better way to do this, or something, because I clearly think that some of these positions I have, and there's other ones I think we should throw in the house, you know? But maybe if we also adding positions after we do our organizational assessment to even find out if we need these, would also make more sense. So, yeah, some of them, I think, maybe cart before the horse, maybe we'll find out if we need them, but, you know, it, when they're all up together, it's just really, really hard to make a fair assessment, and, yeah, I don't know. But, uh, but, you know, like I said, you think there's some good things in here, so.
And, yeah, any other comments or questions from the board, and questions from George? George, why did you do it this way?
Uh, I don't know how else we'd be able to do that, we'd have to, to go like approve a line-by-line budget. I mean, I, well, no, I'm talking about just for the pay rates, okay? So, so for the, the salary, it's not the entire budget, the salary. We've had this in the past where we lumped two or three things together, and it's like, I'm all four of one, but two of them I'm not, so. For the new positions you were saying? Yes. Yeah. Yeah, so the salary ordinance reflects the budget, uh, and, as we know, there's thousands of lines on it. I assume there's gonna be stuff throughout the entire budget, and some people are like, not like, I mean, that's, you know, that's just how we've always done the, you know, it'd be a very difficult task, I think, to like put a check mark next to every line item, yeah.
Sure. Any other comments or questions? All right, there's a motion and a second.
Trustee Lee, please.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Gage?
Aye.
Motion passes. An ordinance adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year commencing on January first, twenty-twenty-six, and ending on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six for the Village of Orland Park, Cookinville Counties, Illinois.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year commencing on January first, twenty-twenty-six, and ending on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six for the Village of Orland Park, Cookinville Counties, Illinois.
There's a motion and a second, any further comments about the, this particular? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee, please.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Gage?
Aye.
Motion passes. Trustee two, Village Manager William Sanchez versus Village of Orland Park et al., settlement agreement and general release.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Jesse Lawrence?
I move to approve the settlement agreement and general release between the Village of Orland Park and William Sanchez, and authorize the village manager to execute the settlement agreement and general release, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any comments or questions from the trustees? George, you want to provide a very brief background?
Yeah, so all of the parties involved in the William Sanchez versus Village of Orland Park et al. have reached a settlement. The terms of the settlement are set forth in the attached settlement agreement and mutual release. Uh, it includes monetary payment to claimant. Uh, so, uh, assuming approval tonight, this will put an end to this litigation.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee, please.
Um, so with regard to the settlement agreement, we are, if, if we are comfortable with this and we approve it, then we will not be incurring more attorney's fees in continuing and we approve it, then we will not be incurring more attorney's fees in continuing to negotiate or continuing to.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
Question for George. How much have we spent litigating this over the last couple of years?
On the last count, we're at, I believe it's $460,000.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? George, does the number you just cited include the issue we had earlier with accounts payable? Does that firm part of this?
Yeah, that firm, that, what's the legal, like, have your separate account?
That's escrow?
It's the escrow, they have a fancy word for it. They don't call it escrow, lawyers. But that's where, it's going into that. Yeah, to pay for, to pay for the settlement.
So if we agree to settle, we owe that bill?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, there's a motion, a second, call the roll.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
No.
Trustee Katsinas.
No.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Motion passes. Will now proceed, go back to approval.
You need to take them, if we need a motion, take it off the table.
Is there a motion to remove the accounts payable from the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
I approve to remove the accounts payable item from the table.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Malani. Trustee Leeblatt.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
So, so we did have accounts payable November 18th, 2025 through December 1st, 2025 approval. At that time, we did have a motion by Trustee Lawrence, seconded by Trustee Leeblatt. We then had a motion by Trustee Katsinas to amend that motion to remove the payment to the law firm regarding the settlement for $225,000, and that was seconded by Trustee Healy.
That was the table.
That was the table, so that, that.
So we need that.
I think you can just do a new motion. Can we just, can we disagree that we would drop those motions?
She rescinded.
She rescinded her, she did, right? That's what, right? So that's off the table, so now whatever the board wants to do, they can do.
Will entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Leeblatt.
I move to approve the accounts payable November 2nd, 2025 through December 1st, 2025 in the amount of $2,315,170 and 36 cents.
Second. There's a motion, a second, any comments or questions about accounts payable? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leeblatt.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
I have, Jane, I have a conflict, I have a business relationship with a vendor on the list.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani. Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Motion passes. Non-scheduled citizens and visitors are public comment, and items relevant to the village's business.
I think we can assume no one wants to. Please identify yourself, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Tracy Maureen Sullivan. I'm just here in this world of criticism, honestly, to say thank you. Thank you to all of you, sir. Thank you to all of you who work here at the village. I appreciate all you do. I know it's not easy, and it's tough decisions. I live on Stanley Creek, I drive 159 through, on 151st region, I'm on 94th and 159 all the time. So the things that you talk about last couple of meetings are affecting my neighborhood and our village, so thank you for that. In this world of criticism, thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We should have just said it there. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion.
Oh, wait, no.
More comments, Trustee Healy.
I just want to say, thank you to all my fellow trustees for picking up the, for picking, for being at the parade and taking care of it when I wasn't there. I hear you got a, you got great time and represented the village very well, so thank you for doing it my way.
Trustee Katsinas.
Just want to remind people, shout vocal, please, go to our restaurants. We have a bunch of stores, any stores you can ever think of are in Orland. Buy gift cards, try to shop in Orland Park at all possible, but thank you to Public Works on the snow event, outstanding job, Joe. And thank you to Ray for putting together a wonderful parade. You know, kids really had a good time despite it was a little cold. Not as many, a little snowy, but still it was a good time. And I'm looking at Steve, thank you, sir, for all you do too in development services, and for your contributions tonight, and our police chief as well. Thank you.
Trustee Malani.
Yeah, thank you to everybody that orchestrated the event yesterday from our police department, emergency services, and recreation staff that was out there bringing the cold. I think we need to work on a candy budget, maybe find something that's actually chewable in 30-degree weather. But other than that, I think it overall went well. And just also note, right before Thanksgiving, our Owl special rec, our team won a bronze medal at their, at their event, so congratulations to them, and as always, thank you to the staff that support that. So thank you all, have a great night.
Trustee Leeblatt.
I just, I'm also wanted to just repeat the thank you for, you know, to our, our crew for their efforts in our snow removal. I think the village was in fantastic shape the next day after it snowed constantly for a very long time. So that's just, I mean, they're out all night, they're out all night, and I thank them for that. And also, you know, again, you know, the village staff for the wonderful event. Yes, not yesterday, it was Sunday. Oh, that was yesterday, gosh. Is it still Monday right now? But thank you for, you know, thank you for all of that, and, and, you know, for all the work you do all around, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Trustee Lawler.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, tonight, we, we voted on a lot of tough issues, whether it was annexation, eminent domain, and the tax budget levy. You know, I just want the Orland Park residents to know that, you know, we, we don't take these decisions lightly, and we're making our decisions based on what we think is best for Orland Park as a whole. Hopefully, the decisions we made tonight are beneficial to Orland Park residents. I know some people didn't like the outcomes, but hopefully, we'll continue to work with them to make it as least painful as possible for them. Again, want to thank staff for all the hard work you guys have done, put together the budget, and, you know, working with us to get us to try and understand it. And, you know, thank you.
Trustee Lawrence.
One of the things about being an elected official, I'm finding out, are that people are reaching out to me, people that I talked to many, many months ago, or people that I've met over current weeks, and they have a variety of things to say, they're asking me questions, how do they get this fixed, how do they write a paper about something they're doing that they shouldn't be doing. But last night, or actually, it was today, I received a communication from a resident who attended the Christmas parade and about the Santa, and, and she said, her family had a great time, she said the fireworks and the drone show were awesome, and that it was a very nice surprise. She appreciated that there was somewhere to sit down inside the civic center and warm up a little bit, and be able to come back out and enjoy it again for a little while. She loved the coloring roles on the table for the younger people to be entertained while the older ones were running around and, and putting on performances. She loved that Village Hall was the setting for where Santa was, and just thought it was really great that residents had a chance to come in and see, you know, this is the center of their Village Hall for people who don't normally do that. And then, yeah, she said this was one of the best parade and tree lighting events that she's been to since she's lived in Orland Park.
That's always great news, and I'll echo the comments that the board's made to staff, whether it was the snow event or the parades, right, that it's the hope that George, you and all the staff appreciates. We get that what you do makes the village run, and events in its totality is what makes this community, right? I think I've long held that there's two Orlands, there's Orland, the place that people come to for shopping, or for restaurants, or for medical care, and then there's where the $60,000 live. And it's important for us to keep investing and being thoughtful about what it means to make that a community and a hometown. So again, tip of the hat to the staff, they've done a great job on a couple of different things, very much appreciate that. You know, George, as, as I said earlier in my budget comments, as we go forward, we have pretty high expectations for you and staff in terms of board putting together a statement tonight with a budget. And we're saying, we're going to hold you and your team accountable for delivering of those things, which is, we want faster, better services, and we want it to cost less over time. There are going to be a lot of different ways to get, there will be technology, there will be process, there will be making sure you got the right number of people doing the right things when you come out of the assessment. Of course, 26, over the course of the year, expect this board to push you guys pretty hard to make sure we deliver on those promises. And so with that, let's go home.
And make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Leeblatt.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy. Trustee Malani.
No.
No, I think they want to stay.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.